Good evening all.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order and I'm gonna read the call of the meeting. Published in the Hartford Current, March 22nd and March 28th, Zone 6 Legal Notice, Town of Bloomfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will conduct public hearings at a meeting on April 4th, 2022 commencing at 7:30 PM via the Zoom platform to consider the following. One, application by Paul Benny for a variance request from Section 3.7. B of the Bloomfield zoning regulations to allow a proposed detached garage to exceed 15 feet in height at 112 Territville Road in an R40 zone. Application by Global Tech Design LLC for variance requests from Section 4.5. C of the Bloomfield zoning regulations to allow a front yard setback of 17 feet where 25 feet is the minimum front yard setback required to construct a second entrance on the front of structure located at 3 Park Avenue in a GWD zone. A full copy of the applications are available for inspection at the planning office at Town Hall. Application material is also available on the zoning board of appeals. Section of the town's website at this meeting. Interested persons may be heard virtually. May be heard and written communication, sorry, received information for how to attend the meeting virtually will be published in on the website. A minimum of 24 hours before the meeting dated at Bloomfield, Connecticut. It's the 22nd day of March 2022. Zoning Board of Appeals Shirley Williams, Secretary, Jekyll and Isaacson Chair. Okay, and then we have application, which is not on here. That was continued, correct?
First on the agenda.
Okay, let me give me one second here. I have a feeling that Shirley's having a problem getting in again because I have a text. Um, maybe. Shirley's trying to get in. She's been on since seven o'clock and she's not, she's using the link that was sent. The link was coming from Jose.
Um. Well, she was logged in earlier and I promoted her as a panelist. I'm not sure. She probably logged back out. Um, I can surely I can send you a link again, just with through the agenda. And, and I can just promote you.
Okay.
I'll do that.
All right, so the first application is the the appeal of two brothers LLC from a cease and desist order regarding noncompliance with previous previously issued special exception approval conditions, failure to renew special exception vehicle storage in a manner not approved by PTC. Section 6 dot 11 overnight vehicle storage not within a building. Section 4.1. D. So who is here for that applicant?
Ken Slater, attorney at Howland and Sage, representing the applicant. My clients indicate that they're on as well, but I don't know whether on my list of participants, they are not. So I don't know whether or not they need to be granted panelists. They registered and received a, an email that came from
They, they are in attendance on, on the web, on the webinar, I see.
All right, will they be able to be asked them questions?
Can I welcome? Would you like me to allow them to speak right now?
On just, I'm not sure how the chair would operate on an enforcement appeal. Some, some commissions do it differently and hear from the enforcement officer first and, and others would hear from the appellant first. But if we're gonna make our presentation, I would need him available.
Excuse me, point of order Jackie. I see that Shirley's on as an attendee.
Okay, so, so Linda needs to upgrade her to a panelist.
Right.
Thank you.
And I, I think the owners are there too.
They're here now.
Okay, you, you have to upgrade them to panelists also so they can talk.
Well, they don't need to talk quite yet. Thank you. Oh, good Shirley, we are ready.
Thank you very much.
I read the call of the meeting.
I, I, yeah, I heard you.
Okay. All right, so, um, I think, um, for purposes of this meeting, is it Seth that's sitting or Jennifer? That's gonna be voting. Linda, do you have a record from whose turn it is, just so people know ahead of time?
I don't have the, the latest record of who went last, but you can appoint either one on, at this point.
No, did either of you vote last meeting?
It was Jennifer.
It was Jennifer. Okay, so then it's Seth tonight.
Um, wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry Tiffany was the one that voted. She voted last, sorry.
Not Jennifer. Okay, so you guys can put a point and decide which one of you is gonna go, go for tonight. So usually we do listen to the zoning enforcement officer first. That's how we've always done our meetings here.
Yes, okay, well, good evening, board members. Thank you for your time tonight. Linda Loriano, Town of Bloomfield zoning enforcement officer. Um, I am now first, do you, did you all receive the copy of the memorandum or the report at the last meeting? I know it was postponed to this public hearing date per the applicant's request and the board granted them an extension on May 7th. Well, a postponed, to postpone the meeting to this date. Um, do you all have a copy?
I have a copy of the letter dated March 7th. That was signed by Attorney Slater.
Okay, I will share screen with you as I present the summary of the case on any timeline of event that led to the cease and desist order. Are you able to see the screen? Not yet.
No.
So.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go through the, so originally, um, I, I'm being newly appointed, as you're aware, the new enforcement officer, um, as of January 3rd, appointed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at a special meeting. Um, and prior to my appointment, we had Michael Demato, who was serving as the acting zoning enforcement officer for the town of Bloomfield. Um, on November 19th, the planning and zoning department received a complaint regarding the property at 56 Tungus Avenue. The property is approximately 0.86 acres in size and is located within, within the Bloomfield Center District BCD zone. The complaint was related to the total number of vehicles on the property. According to the town records, on June 5th, and as I go, I'm reading the report. On June 5th, 1989, the property was issued a special exception approval from ZBA to conduct an automotive, automotive related use. The approval was issued with four specific conditions related to the location and quantity of vehicles of the, on the property. Exhibit one. I'm gonna go back and forth on this one. As we can. That is the special exception that was granted on May 2nd, 1989. I'm sorry, June 5th, 1989. That was just the date that, that they had asked for the special exception. Um, so on June 5th, 1989, they were granted the exception with four specific conditions. So the conditions of approval granted by the zoning board of appeals to Russell P. Williams of 56 Tungus Avenue on June 5th, 1989 was followed. Not more than 14 vehicles to be displayed, six on the south side, eight on the north side to the front of the station. No sign shall be posted on the vehicles or building except for a sticker or warranty no larger than eight and a half inch by 11 inch. No more than 25 vehicles are permitted on the site to be offered for sale. The special exception shall be valid for two years and subject to the renewal of the board at the end of the two years. Those were the four specific conditions pointed out. An exhibit one. I will continue. Please bear with me. Section 611 outside storage of registered vehicle as well as section 4.1D for JJ special permit uses in the BCD zone. Following the review of the 1989 approval, the above referenced zoning regulations, a site inspection was conducted on December 13th, 2021 by Mike Demato, which indicated the following. Indicating more than 25 vehicles on the west side of the property, exhibit two. I will go to that in a minute. Um, photo on the building frontage, Tungus Avenue with more than 10 vehicles within the photo frame. That's right on the frontage and to the east side of the property indicating more than 14 vehicles within the photo frame. Just wanna point out these three pictures because the special condition.
Excellent.
Okay, making everyone dizzy now with that. God bless you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, this is the north. I believe this is, if I can change its orientation so it's better visible for you. It's gonna be really hard. Here it is.
You know, it is in our packet from last month though.
Can you see it? Okay, so this orientation here points out to the north. The condition. Six on the south, eight on the north side to the front of the station. This is the condition, one, not more than eight vehicles on this side. And as you see, we have a photo here indicating that was taken December 13th of more than eight vehicles on the north side. Additional vehicles on the frontage. And to the east. I'm sorry, and to the south, six vehicles, not more than six vehicles. And as you can see, we have over, I believe it was estimated to be over 14 vehicles. So six on this side, eight on the other. That was the approval. And not more than 25 vehicle on the site and the rest being in the rear. I'm going back to the report here as we're following through. I just showed you exhibit two, three, and four. Those were the pictures of the vehicles. In the rear portion of the property, it was also viewed from the plaza at 40 Tungus Avenue. There was a parking lot there and a commercial property. Um, the zoning officer, Mike Demato, at the time indicated that there were at least 40 additional vehicles being stored in the rear of the property. It also informed you that on September 23rd, 2021, the property owners did obtain a town plan approval by the planning and, by the plan and zone commission for automotive repair and sale at 15 Highland Park Drive. Um, which was to expand their operations for additional, additional location. I believe that as of this moment, on this date, no proposal, even though they did receive the special permit, no proposal to, to work on there. It's, it's pretty much a vacant lot at this time. There has been no approval file for the associated permits for that site. So subsequently, based on the file review and the site inspection, a notice of violation was issued December 17th, 2021. A notice of receipt was received. Um, so the applicant or the property owner did receive the warning notice. They were given 50 days to, 15 days to bring the property into compliance. Um, which the compliance, the order was, I believe it was exhibit, exhibit five. Notice of violation. With me here. It's in here. Number 17, this is exhibit five, notice of violation warning letter. Property owner and the agent were made aware of of the site inspection and also of the findings. And the violation warning letter actually pointed out that there were four conditions to their June 5th, 1989 approval, which was the last approval that they, special exception they received of not having more than 14 vehicles to be displayed, which was six on the south and eight on the north. And you both saw the exhibits of those as well as the frontage. Um, with as far as signage, they were in compliance. Um, however, not more than 25 vehicles on the site to be offered for sale. We don't know the exact amount, but we definitely, you know, could see that there were a substantial amount of, of 40 vehicles, possibly more on the site. And, and the photos, you know, you could see that in the photograph. I'm not sure if anyone drove by, but I did drive by today. It doesn't look like there were any vehicles removed. It did seem like there were a few more vehicles in the front of the property. Um, and the back of the property, I'm not sure how cars get around there. But there was a substantial amount of vehicles in the back. Um, so you have the four conditions here. Um, again, the violation indicated that there were more than 35 vehicles in the front, which was pretty accurate, um, according to the photos and site inspections. So they have, they were found in violation of their special exception of 1989, granting them the 14 vehicles for display and not more than 25 vehicles on site. They were also found in violation of the current zoning regulations, which indicate that on section 4.1D for JJ, where the BCD zone.
Says, you can make sure he doesn't see you, so make sure.
I'm sorry.
They need to be muted.
Hold on one moment.
They can speak when it's their turn.
Thank you. Uh, the Bloomfield zoning regulations, which indicate that no storage and I can cite you the, the section here. Um, that section say service, repair, or storage of motor vehicles may be permitted as long as the overnight storage of all motor vehicles take place within the confines of a building. They were found in violation of section 4.1D for JJ of the current regulations and section 611, which is the outside storage of motor vehicles. Where buffer requirements and the indicated amount more than what is permitted would be subject to the approval of the town plan and zone commission, but they have not been back for any approvals on, or any amendment or variance or special permit. Actually, if, if they, if they wanted to add more vehicles, it would have to come back to the plan and zoning commission to ask for a special permit to allow for more vehicles for the plan. If that was their intention. They were then directed to remove all the vehicles which were located on the property in access of what was approved in 1989, special exception by the zoning board of appeal. Or submit a new complete application to the planning and zoning department seeking approval to conduct activity on the site in accordance with the current conditions within 50 days of the issuance. So as you can see, they were given a choice of either comply or coming in to seek approval according to the current site conditions and regulations. Subsequently, um, I'm gonna go back.
Linda, Linda, did they ever comply with D? Did they come back two years later?
Uh, no, they have not. My understanding was that they did not. They, they sought a special permit for a different site as an expansion. Um, and, and I believe that it was thought that that would relieve a lot of the overflow there on, onto the new property. That was my understanding, but as of this date, no permit application on, or you know, additional approval, you know, was have been filed. No action have been taken by, by the applicant or, or agent on this. Um, okay, so to follow up on the on the noncompliance on January 21st, 2022, a cease and desist order. Um, I'm sorry, on January 24th. Um, let's see. That sort of was issued, that was exhibit nine. Um, that was subsequent to a follow-up inspection on January 21st, which showed, um, again, vehicles still appeared and it appeared to have increased in number of vehicles on the property, which are in exhibit six, seven, and eight, which are attached to this report as well. Um, the cease and desist order was sent January 24th and received by the agent January 26th. The application was received in our office on, in February 4th, appealing the decision of the zoning enforcement officer of cease and desist order. Um, so we just, you know, do wanna point out, you know, based on the review. You know, they are in violation of the special exception approval of 1989, having excessive amount of vehicle on the property. Um, they're also in violation of the regulations or current regulations. Section 4.1D for JJ, where a service, repair, or storage of motor vehicles may be permitted as long as they're stored overnight inside of, of the building. Um, that would be also authorized through a special permit application, which again, we have not received. And the outside storage of registered vehicles, which indicates, you know, anything in excess of what they were granted um, or is permitted on the site as far as buffers and, and, and the layout would be approval by the town plan commission. So, um, based on a review of the above zoning regulations in 1989 ZBA special exception approval, it is the opinion, I am reading again Mike Demato's comments of the town of Bloomfield if this property is in violation of their previously issued approval, both through noncompliance with the conditions and also, um, you know, noncompliant. Still, till this day, remain noncompliant with the amount of vehicles on the property and noncompliant with, with said section, current regulations. So I'm open to any questions that you may have at this time.
Madam Chair.
Um, yes, Attorney Needleman.
Hi, Mark Needleman, Town Attorney, speaking. I have some additional background, which I'd like to provide to the board and the applicant and their counsel. In terms of more recent events, starting in February 2019. On February 28th, 2019, the owner, then owner, asked the TPZ to allow additional vehicles to be placed on the property. There was discussion and no action was taken. The minutes seemed to suggest, although they aren't terribly detailed, seemed to suggest that the commission didn't feel there was anything for them to take action on. That was February 2019. In July 2019, July 29th, a cease and desist order issued same violations letter before you tonight. There was no response and on January 27th, 2020, so a little more than two years ago, we had our first court hearing. It was continued to February 20, 2020 for a subsequent hearing. There were discussions between counsel and myself in an effort to resolve the matter. On March 25th, 2020, there was a further proceeding in court. It was continued at the request of the owner who represented, they were making great efforts to resolve the matter. On July 8th, 2020, there was a joint request, joint meaning the owner and the town, request for a continuance to September 10th to allow the owner to acquire a new site with the representations being made to the town that that would allow them to cure the violation. Hence our agreement for the continuance to September 10th. At September 10th, there was a hearing and the parties reached an agreement, which they indicated would be drawn up and submitted to the court. That stipulated agreement, which the zoning officer has in her file and I've provided to counsel for the owners, was approved by the court on October 7th, 2020. Um, that included the issuance of a injunction against the owners and joining them or ordering them to not violate the town zoning laws, in particular, the matters that were the subject of the action and to be more specific, the conditions of the approval, as well as any other zoning regulations. And that would include the one you heard tonight about inside storage and outside storage. Approved by the court on October 7th, 2020. It also included a provision of daily fines for every day that the agreement. That the agreement, the stipulated judgment was not adhered to. And it would be my position to you tonight. That the owner has not complied on any of those days since the October seventh, two thousand twenty approval. December seventeen, two thousand twenty-one, a notice of violation was sent by the zoning officer to the agent for service of the owner. Let me back up actually on September twenty-third. Two thousand twenty-one, the TPZ approved the special permit. For auto sales and repairs at fifteen Highland Drive, Park Drive that you heard mentioned by the zoning officer. And again, that was supposed to be, according to the owner. Their way of ensuring compliance for the Tungus Avenue property. No application has been submitted to date. To the town for site plan approval or for construction at that site since the September twenty-third approval. Following on December seventeenth, there was a notice of violation letter sent by the zoning officer to the agent for service. No response. December thirteenth, there was a site inspection by staff. Property was not in compliance with the permit or the terms. Of the stipulated judgment, still no communication from the owner. January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Follow-up inspection, which you just heard of. There appeared to be more cars than before. January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, cease and desist. Was delivered to the agent for service for the owners. And as you know, on March seventh. Subsequent to the appeal being filed. The owner requested and obtained a continuance until tonight. It is my recommendation that you not. Take any action or proceed on the basis of any. Failure to renew the permit. There's some question as to whether or not that would currently be a valid. Term and condition of a special permit. And I would recommend that for tonight's purposes, you proceed with the. What I'll call the physical violations on the site if you deem them to be. Present. I'm available to answer any questions. Linda, can you? Show that stipulation for judgment on the screen.
One moment.
While you're doing that, let me explain, a stipulation for judgment is an agreement. And in this case, it was an agreement that the parties, both the town. And the owners entered into a stipulated agreement. And the party submitted that to the Superior Court for its review and approval. Asking that the stipulation. Be approved, be granted, and entered as an order of the court. And that's in fact what did take place.
I am gonna share the screen now, one moment. This is the stipulated agreement that Attorney Needleman is referring to. And we'll see.
So briefly, I'll, I'll read it because it's rather small here.
Thank you.
Dated October sixth, two thousand twenty. The parties agree that judgment may enter in favor of the plaintiff, Michael Casilla, who was the zoning officer. For the town of Bloomfield against the defendant, Two Brothers Auto LLC as follows. One, a permanent injunction. Meaning it's not temporary, it's indefinite going forward, permanent. May issue. Enjoining the defendant and its principles. The defendant being the owner and its principles from violating the terms of the special permit, permit issued for the subject property. The defendant and its principles will strictly comply with all the terms of the existing special exception. Granted for the subject property fifty-six Tungus Avenue. In nineteen eighty-nine, as well as other zoning regulations related to the subject property. Three, the defendant shall pay to the town, care of the town attorney, the sum of two thousand dollars. As reimbursement for costs incurred by the town on or before October twenty-eighth, and that was complied with. And four, the defendant shall pay to the town of Bloomfield the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars per day. For each day that the defendant fails to comply with the permanent injunction. Notwithstanding this provision, the plaintiff shall not be barred from seeking additional or other relief. And certainly, the current action can be deemed additional or other relief. That's, that's the history. If you have any questions on that, I can try to answer them. But between the CEO and myself, I think you have a pretty good background. And my recommendation would be that. The owners through their counsel, if they have any questions they'd like to pose, that they certainly be allowed to do that. And then if they have something that they'd like to present, they certainly should be afforded that opportunity and. Of course, staff can always ask questions either. Of the zoning officer, myself, or of Attorney Slater, the owners. Or anyone else for that matter who has information bearing on the subject.
Alan has a question right now. Go ahead, Alan.
So Attorney Needleman, are you saying that they're in violation, they owe two hundred and fifty dollars a day since October twenty-twenty?
That would be my position and I will be pursuing that. Matter as well independently of.
What does that calculate out to?
Haven't done the math yet, but it's a lot of money.
So typically, the town can throw lean on a property and then pursue it that way too, correct?
That's a possibility. I, I have not. You know, finalized how I'm going to proceed with it. I want to see in part how this commission. Wishes to deal with their part of it and try to do everything in once.
I just want to say, thank you for providing the background information. I know Attorney Needleman is very well aware of. The site and the previous history. But what we have before you tonight and what you're acting on is at the actual appeal to the cease and desist order that was recently issued. I do believe the background information is great, but we are here tonight for the current. Feel to this cease and desist order that was issued. On January twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question before I let the attorney speak? Okay, Attorney Slater, did you want to present?
Absolutely. Before I begin, one of the things I was going to be discussing, but I think it may be moot based on Attorney Needleman's advice. Is the point that when a special permit is granted, that there, there's a question right now in the Supreme Court about whether or not a special permit can put a deadline on when work would be. Completed on a project. But it is certainly the land use treatise and most land use lawyers that I'm aware of are. Believe that when a special permit is granted, the determination that it's permissible at the location is a permanent one that runs with the land. So an idea that you'd have to, if you granted a Dunkin' Donuts, a special permit to operate at a location. You know, they, you know, if there were any sort of renewal that perhaps if there were some additional submissions, it happens with, sometimes with. Quarries where there's a renewal that you'd come back and you'd present additional information, but there's no opportunity. Ask permission a second time of whether or not use is permitted. So I think it turned, well, I know Attorney Needleman advised that. That issue, that is whether or not there's a need to come in for a renewal, shouldn't be the basis for enforcement. And if that's the case, I won't go into detail on that and I'll just focus on the other ones. I just wanted to make sure. That the commission agreed with Attorney Needleman's advice and we're going to proceed on the. What he described as the physical violations with respect to the number of the vehicles for sale into the special permit.
But you wanted Mark to answer that?
No, no, Mark advised you that way and I just don't want to spend time on that issue if you were in agreement with his advice that. There seems to be a common understanding that a renewal of a special permit like that is not a valid condition for a special permit. So that we should focus on the other elements of the enforcement order.
I, I also agree with Attorney Needleman on that aspect.
That's fine.
Okay, then I won't focus in on that. I will say I'm surprised I'm here tonight and, and I had a conversation, I heard from. Mr. Demato, I wasn't realizing, I didn't realize he was leaving. I represent, my firm represent a bunch of towns, probably a larger part of my practice is actually advising boards like yours rather than. Representing persons in front of boards and my first approach when I'm on, you know, Attorney Needleman's side. Or, you know, Mike Demato and now Ms. Loriano would be to look for a solution to resolve any outstanding violations and avoid proceeding with the hearing. And that was a discussion I had with Mr. Demato before, just before your last hearing. And, you know, we agreed we would work together on that and that was the basis for our request of continuance. And he and I did have conversations after that in, in one aspect that. He was under the impression that if you had a dealer's license, you weren't allowed to repair, that this was strictly a, a dealership. For the sale of vehicles. And I told him that I would do, you know, that that wasn't my understanding, but that I would do the additional research to provide him some additional information. I also had counseled my client when I looked at photographs that it would be very difficult for. Someone to determine which vehicles are there for being serviced and which vehicles are there for the purposes of sale. And so I. I was going to make, make suggestions of the client, my clients, in a way in which there could be some signage that would have benefited specifically. Vehicles that are there for sale and the ones that are, that are not and that are there to be repaired. And so Mike had been very busy and what I didn't realize is that part of that was to winding up his affairs as enforcement officer. And that, or acting enforcement officer and that Ms. Loriano was going to be taking over. So I got an email, I was actually in an airport, went to my, my middle son's. Spring Parents Weekend and I was in an airport airplane to head to Virginia when I saw that he wasn't participating because frankly, because he and I hadn't connected to go over that information. I expected because we still had additional days for extension to grant, that we were going to do the exact same thing that we did last month and it would be continued. There and see, so I did my best over the course of the weekend and today to, to prepare. My. And I, I did receive from Attorney Needleman on, on Friday. While I, you know, while I was traveling, but then I was able to look at it over the weekend, the. The order that was entered into the stipulation and I also took, I was not involved in that proceeding. This is the first time I've been involved in representing. The, the company and their principals. Ken Barber was an attorney practiced out of East Hampton who had referred this enforcement matter to me. He was the attorney who had appeared in that, the other proceeding. And as you saw, it related to the special permit that was granted. So before I begin, as Attorney Needleman said, I would have an opportunity to ask a couple of questions. Could I ask questions of the enforcement officer?
Sure.
Ms. Loriana, do you know which vehicles in those photographs that are part of the materials for vehicles that are, were there to be sold? And which ones were there to be repaired?
No, I have, there was no indication on there, on those vehicles which were for repair or which. Were for display.
Did you see any onsite that had, had signage or any, well, I'll back up. The photographs that are part of the package were not photographs that you took, correct?
That's correct.
Were you with Mr. Demato when he did the? The photos that were part of the, the package that the board has?
The second part of the photos, he, I was here, I wasn't with him when he took it, but I was an employee of the town of Bloomfield, yes. That was the January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two site inspection, exhibit six, seven, and eight. Those are the photos that he took and. I was here employed at the time, although I was not assigned. He was handling the case because he was still here part-time.
Okay, so you, you, you weren't with him when he took the photographs. You, you were employed and you were on your way to becoming zoning enforcement officer, but you weren't with him at the site inspection?
I was not with him at the site inspection.
Now, have you reviewed the, the, the entire file related to this site?
Yes, which is. I, what we have available, yes, on, on our web.
Isn't it true that on this site, there is a lawful repair business as well as the authorization by special permit to sell vehicles?
When you indicate lawful, I'm, so I, I, I just want to back up a little bit. I was not involved in the enforcement of the cease and desist order at the time that this happened. So I cannot say whether at the time it was lawful or not. I reviewed the case. Recently, when it was just assigned to me at the end of the contract term with the zoning enforcement officer, Mike Demato. At the time.
I'll try to be more specific. Isn't it true that in addition to selling vehicles, it is also lawful? For the operation of a auto repair business that existed before any special permits were granted?
The sale of automobile as well as, according to the record, there is something from, I believe, nineteen. The prior. A special exception that they had allowed them for. I believe car sale and some repair.
Okay, are you aware that this, this location was established as a car repair business because the, the town of Bloomfield took. The property for redevelopment of a, what was then an existing repair facility in nineteen sixty-nine operated by Havings? Are you aware of that?
That this was part of a redevelopment at the time? Is that what you're asking me if I was aware?
No, no, are, are you aware that this site became the location of a gasoline sales and repair business? After another location was taken by the town for redevelopment?
I did read that, yes.
And that goes back to nineteen sixty-nine?
I believe so. It went back to nineteen sixty. I didn't make a copy of it, but. I did read the gasoline station, I believe, two pumps. My memory.
Now, does the record reflect the fact that, 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 that there was a point in time that the owner of the repair business wanted to get permission to also sell vehicles?
I don't know also to sell vehicles along with the pump station. I believe it was part of removing that part. And have some sale of vehicles, yes.
Removing what part?
The pump station afterwards, after they received their special exception.
Do you have anything in your file that suggests that the, the approval to sell cars was related to elimination of the pumps?
I, I don't recall that, you know, the connection with, you know. The relationship between the both, no.
Do you have any reason to dispute the fact that there was, that the special permit that's been, that's been granted related only to the sale of vehicles and not to repair?
I don't believe that it was just related to the sale. I think it was related to the overall. I, I believe that the display was for the fourteen vehicles on the northern. Of the property and on the south part. And they were allowed to have twenty-five vehicles on site. But the display of those vehicles were for sale, were fourteen.
Are you aware of anything in the file that limits the number of vehicles they can have on site for the purposes of repair?
I would say that it's the fourteen minus the twenty-five, it would limit them for that amount.
And would you base that on?
Uh, on the recent, the most recent approval of the special exception of June fifth, nineteen eighty-nine.
All right.
Madam Chair, perhaps it would be helpful for everyone if the zoning officer could display once again the conditions of approval for special exceptions.
June, the June fifth, nineteen eighty-nine? Is that?
My presentation is going to go through several documents, which will include that.
Well, I, I'm suggesting we display that since you're asking about it, Attorney.
No, actually, I was asking about the repair, but if you'd like to pull that up, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, the fourteen vehicles to be displayed and not more than twenty-five on the site, so in, in the rear.
Well, if you could, if you could pull it up.
If I can share my screen, I have it in front of me, can I do that, Ms. Lorenz?
Sure. You should have permission to to share your screen. There you go.
Can you make that larger, please?
Try, hold on one second.
I have it in front of me, but for others that might not.
I am, that's in PowerPoint, so just bear with me, because normally if I had it in a PDF, I would do it differently. So just bear with, you know, I can do it a different way, just let me stop sharing for a second. All right, that's. All right, does that look bigger?
It does.
Thank you.
So here are the conditions of approval, they speak for themselves, I don't think any of us were around at that meeting, so it is what it is. And counsel, if you have any questions, feel free to inquire.
I would, okay.
For the record, when you're, when you're speaking, can you just please identify yourself for just the purposes of minutes or recording, sound recording?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to do that, again, Ken Slater, for the, the parent. And I'd ask the zoning enforcement officer that it refers to modifying the special permit to allow cars to be displayed, is that correct? That's under one? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, to modify?
It says modify the special permit to allow cars to be displayed as follows, correct?
Correct.
And nothing in that first paragraph relates to cars on site for repair, correct?
Uh, nothing refers to car repair, no.
And then A says fourteen vehicles to be displayed, again, correct?
It does say that.
All right, and then the third B is the kind of signage that you'd see on vehicles.
For warranty.
C is no more than twenty-five to be offered for sale, correct?
That's what it says.
Okay, and is it fair to say that there's nothing in any of these conditions that pertains to vehicles that are on the site that are being repaired? Is that fair to say?
It's fair to say that, it doesn't say that it's to be repaired, correct?
All right. I'm going to try. Just hope it looks large enough for you, so I'm gonna try to run my PowerPoint, which was submitted earlier. All right, can you see what says town of Bloomfield on the top?
Yeah.
But yes.
All right, now, does that look really small to you? Because it's a document, it's a PowerPoint. Try to zoom in, but that doesn't work well.
Counsel Mark Needleman, speaking. The permit that was just displayed dealt with and made special reference to the special exception granted November twenty-second seventy-two. So why are you making reference to documents prior to that date?
Uh, why is because the only special permit that's been obtained relates to activities that weren't grandfathered as non-conforming uses. The, once the use, the image that you see now, but it, but it's small, is the nineteen sixty-nine document that pertains to the relocation of the service station. The service station pre-existed. The town acquired parcel at twenty-five Tunksis, which was where the auto repair garage was located, not a sales operation. Uh, that was relocated, and the next page I'm showing is the map that shows the building, the main building and the portico of, back in, this is a nineteen seventy map. This related to the repair business, not a sales business. Uh, and then it wasn't until nineteen seventy-two that there was a permission to sell new cars. What I have from the file is in nineteen seventy-five, they went and referred back to the nineteen seventy-two permission to sell cars. And so this is from nineteen seventy-five. There was no requirement for a special permit to operate the pre-existing gas station and sales service. So the only thing that's referred to is permission to sell used cars. That's referenced, again, to sell cars and not related to the repair. The repair goes all the way back again to nineteen sixty-nine, when there was an existing gas and service repair garage, not a sales dealership. They added that element to the use by special permit. Uh, and that, that aspect, that is the sales, has taken up much of the bandwidth of the history of enforcement. But the repair business pre-existed it. And again, so this refers to nineteen seventy-five, and the sale of used cars for the, for the convenience of the customers of the service station. This is referenced in nineteen seventy-five. So the special permit allowed an additional activity, that is the sales. Um, and that's very clear from the pre-existence of the use in sixty-nine, as well as the language that you see in seventy-five, that refers to the convenience of the customers of the service station. The service station has always existed.
That's, that's not an issue, in terms of the service, so you haven't heard that mentioned tonight, and, and that isn't part of the cease and desist order. And if you're going to make reference to this document before us, as the pre-existing approval, then it obviously contains the terms report, we just.
I'm going back.
Yeah, there we go. I'm not sure what the convenience of customers makes reference to. I think used cars will be displayed only in the rear of the stations, pretty clear. For sale signs, one sign, no larger than fifteen displayed on the station itself. I mean, I don't know that those are the issues before us. If you want to make the issue of used cars only being displayed in the rear of the station, we can.
But no, no, that's not, no, I'm not. I, the, the, the point as I go through is that the pre-existing service station, if they never got this special permit, they would be able to have vehicles parked in the rear, and the side, and the front of the building. There were no limitations in any of the approvals from the non-existing, pre-existing, non-conforming use. That's something that, as you all know on, on the board, certainly Attorney Needleman does as well, that subsequent regulations as they come in being can't stop you from doing what was pre-existing. And the service element, and that is having vehicles on site, there's never been any limitation on how many vehicles can be outside related service. There are with respect to sales. So one of the things I was talking to Mike Demoto about would be to be able to delineate that, because in fairness to my enforcement officer, and I'll go through that with my client in a minute, it would be very, very difficult for an enforcement officer to be able to discern which vehicles are on site, because they're, they're there because my client is repairing the vehicle as part of the service business, in which ones they plan to sell under this, as authorized by the special permit. Because we'll, we'll admit that they cannot sell vehicles but for compliance with the requirement of, of the special permit that was originally granted after the service station was in existence, and has been, you know, the subject of some enforcement, because they think there's, as time went by, there were a need for displaying them in other locations, because as Attorney Needleman just mentioned, at this point in time, the only place they were allowed was at the rear of the station, so that's nineteen seventy-five. So now I'm gonna go forward in sixty-seven-five, this is the notice that they issued the decision with that limitation, you can only have the vehicles that you're selling in the back. And then in nineteen seventy-seven, Mr. Evans was the enforcement officer at that time noted to Mr. Evans that he's, there were vehicles that were being displayed for sale in the front. And and then the, then later in seventy-five, there's a a determination that it was in compliance. And then here's another document in seventy-five. He was permitted, it refers back to the fact that he was permitted back in seventy-two initially to sell the vehicles. And here are minutes from the seventy-five, there was one part I was going to focus in on that I'm not, where the chairman of the commission talked about the, the limitation of the meaning of the renewal, that it wasn't meant to allow for the termination. But I don't need to focus in on that, so I'll, I'll zip through, through these minutes. But they did approve that. Now here in seventy-eight, they found that there was a violation that they were selling, failure to comply with the restriction number two, and that was the location of where the vehicles were parked. Here's another instance in seventy-eight, where Mr. Evans, that they saw that there was a Ford Torino that was parked in the front window on display, whereas at that point in time, the only place you could display vehicles for sale was in the rear. Uh, and again, another enforcement report from seventy-nine, they said there were vehicles that were parked to the west in violation of, of the standards. And so what that led to is the application in seventy-nine has been removed from the active file, it's become active. The buildings for sale must be parked east of the building. And however, in the past, Mr. Evans' compliance has been somewhat sporadic. This location will bear further watching, as my opinion, the further violation would result in a cease and desist order. Again, that's with the location of vehicles for sale. Another one here's, now we fast forward to eighty-seven, and it says you car, used cars are being displayed forward of the front of the building. I believe their approval required that they be parked behind the building. And that's true, the park, the approval in seventy-two and seventy-five had it being in the back. And then, so there was a cease and desist order in eighty-seven, and then that in eighty-seven, and then we fast forward to eighty-nine. And those are the conditions we've already looked at, and eighty-nine, the conditions that were originally put in place regarding the sale of vehicles was modified. And so in eighty-nine, they, they, they gave the owner the ability to, to take advantage of, of the frontage for the display of vehicles for sale. And no, and there's no more than fourteen could be on display, six on the south, and eight on the north. Again, it actually reduced the size of the for-sale stickers to the eight and a half by eleven size. Um, and then it said no more than that twenty-five vehicles permitted on the site to be offered for sale. And so what I have as part of this presentation is just a picture that there's a used car dealer permit that's been granted under state regulations, that kind of a, a permit allows, is the kind of permit you'd have if you do both sale and repairs. There's a repairer-only license under the DMV regulations. And that would be the kind of permit they would have had in nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy, and prior to nineteen sixty-nine, because the Evans actually operated their business at the other location, until the town took that location, and then they moved their repair and, and, and fuel sales to this location. But this is the permit that you'd have if you wanted to repair vehicles. If my client decided they didn't want to sell anymore, they could still hold on to this license, and they could simply just repair vehicles. This is a, it's an indication, but you'll see a better picture of them. If you, if you've gone to a used car and purchased a used car in Connecticut, or at least when I have, there's a sticker like that in the window to indicate whether there's, as, whether there's any kind of warranty, or whether it's being sold as it is. An example of that is, is in this photo. You'll see in two thousand twelve is at the top, and then there's a, an image of the buyer's guide. That's not a for-sale sign, that is just something that the DMV requires. So this is an example of a vehicle that is, is on, on site. Can I simultaneously have my client to be able to identify himself for the record and answer some questions? Because some of these, I'm the attorney, but I need the, my client to be able to answer some more detail regarding. Because some of these, I'm the attorney, but I, I need the, my client to be able to answer some more detail regarding operations on the site. Can we simultaneously speak if they come off you? Not simultaneously speak, but we'll, we'll identify if you're on the record.
They need to identify their name and address for the record.
Billy, can you, can you, you and state your name and address for the record?
Oh, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. First name Vassalios, last name Sakrikis, fifty-six, Tungus, South, Longville, Connecticut.
Okay, Mr. Sakrikis. The, the image, can you see the image that I'm showing now on the screen?
Yeah, the black Audi, I can.
All right, is that, did, did you take that photograph?
I did.
And is that a vehicle that, well, first of all, what's your relationship to? The operator of the business?
A part owner.
And what's the name of the business on site?
Williams Service Center.
And is this a vehicle that has been sold or is for sale at Williams Service Center?
Correct.
It, it, is it for sale today?
Currently, currently for sale, correct.
All right. And did your company place the sticker two thousand and twelve on the upper left corner of that vehicle?
We did.
Right. Is that the kind of signage that you put on vehicles to indicate when they are for sale on your property?
Yes.
All right. And, and can you explain what the, the white, I'll, I'll go back. Is this another image of that same vehicle, but close up to the?
It is.
And that, what is that document that says that the top buyer's guy?
It's a, it's a document that's required by federal law and state law to be displayed in all vehicles for sale. They'll be across the country in the state of Connecticut. So it has to explain if the vehicle comes with a warranty or if it doesn't. And if it does come with a warranty, what warranty coverage is stated.
And how do you know that you're required to post that?
I was actually told firsthand by a DMV state inspector.
All right. I'm going to stop sharing for a second. Okay, can, can you see the document dated February twenty-five, two thousand twenty-two?
Oh, yeah, I can see the top portion of the page.
Okay, and I'll state for the record, this is the, the same set of exhibits that the, the board has. And are also the ones that are posted on the webpage as being the app documents in support of the application. And I'm just going to scroll through down till I get the photographs. Have you seen this image? From the zoning board of appeals document package?
I have.
And does this depict the, the service station and your used car dealership?
It does.
All right. Now, do you place the, the vehicle that we looked at, the Audi that had the, the sticker on it? Do you place the sticker on vehicles that you are displaying for sale?
Typically, yes.
Expand on what you mean typically.
Yeah, we, we usually put them on the car when they're all for, for sale, for display for sale.
All right. And on, in this image, for example. This vehicle. And, and what I'm referring to is page ten of twenty of all the CBA documents, just for the purpose of the record. It's the first photograph that was, according to the zoning enforcement officer's testimony, was taken by Mr. D'Amato. By the way, did Mr. D'Amato ask you to identify which, which, if any of these vehicles? Were being offered for sale and which, if any of them were on site for your repair business?
No, I, I've never spoken to Mr. D'Amato firsthand.
Now, there's a, to the, to the right side of that photograph, there is a blue automobile. Are you familiar with that automobile?
The Volkswagen in question, yes.
This one right now that I'm, I'm putting my cursor on?
Yep, it'd be a Volkswagen Jetta.
Okay. And was that vehicle on site? For the purposes of, of your company's sales?
No.
Why was it there?
Repair.
How about the, what kind of vehicle is a white vehicle close to the building?
That'd be a BMW one series.
Right, and, and which, whose vehicle is that?
That was also in for repair.
And you never sold that vehicle?
Oh, in the past, but it was back for a, a current repair.
Approximately, how long ago had you sold it, you know?
Three, four months.
How about this white vehicle that looks like a small truck, but what is it?
It's an older Nissan pickup truck, late eighties, that was also in for repair.
You weren't selling that vehicle?
No, never have.
Now, there's a line of vehicles here. It looks like, is that a Dodge pickup truck?
Yeah, Dodge Ram fifteen hundred.
All right, was that for sale?
At the time, yes.
Have, have you said sold it?
Uh, yes.
And did that have, can you see the, the entire windshield in this picture?
You can, but it would have had a sticker in the upper window like we normally place.
Okay. Now, I see the nose of another vehicle right there, looks black. Do you know what vehicle that is?
Yeah, it's a Jeep Wrangler four-door.
All right, was that a vehicle that you were selling?
No, that was in for repair.
How about the next, looks like another, is that a pickup truck, the next one?
Yep, that'd be a, a twenty fifteen F one fifty.
All right, and was that for sale?
At the time it was, but it hasn't been sold.
Okay, now, again, you, you, you can't see the windshield, but would that have had a, a tag on it that you, with a year on it?
Yes.
And the next vehicle I see, it looks like a sedan, it's black colored, is, is that right?
Yeah, it'd be a BMW, but that was not for sale, that was in for service for repair.
And how about the, the, the red pickup truck?
That was displayed for sale.
Now, it. I'll try to zoom in a little bit. Can you tell from that photograph whether or not there was a, a display in the window of that?
It's hard to see from this angle of the picture, but I believe it had a sticker at that time.
And would it have been in that location?
It would have been.
But it's hard to tell from that picture.
Correct.
All right. How about the vehicle next to it?
That would have been for sale. It's hard to say what it was, but if you look at it closely, it looks like there is a year sticker in the upper corner of the windshield.
Where I'm pointing right now?
Correct, the yellow.
And in the same, this is the red vehicle you looked at before.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I'm going to show you another photograph. It's going to be the next one in, in the, the package from the zoning enforcement officer. Taken by the former acting zoning enforcement officer. Is this the sign in front of your building?
It is.
Okay, do you know what it says? It's hard, I can't read it right now, I think it might have been.
It's going to say Williams Service Center, I believe it says auto sales and service.
Right. Okay, and this vehicle, was that on display for sale?
Was not.
And when I'm talking about this vehicle, that would be page eleven of twenty of, of the materials in package. And. It's the, the picture in the forefront on the left. What kind of vehicle is that?
That'd be a BMW three series.
And why was that on site?
For repair.
And how about this vehicle?
That was also on site for repair.
And what kind of vehicle was that?
That's a Mercedes SL five hundred.
Okay, and did your company own, ever own either of those vehicles?
No.
There's a pickup truck also under, you know, it'd be behind the first vehicle I asked you about, black. Was that a vehicle on display for sale?
Was not.
And why was that there?
For repair.
And did your company ever own that vehicle?
No.
I see the back end of a blue vehicle, a blue, looks like a blue sedan, that's behind the second vehicle we talked about. Is that a vehicle that you were displaying for sale?
It's hard to see because you can barely see the car, but I. It looks like it might be a BMW, but that car was not for display for sale.
On the right of this image, let's stay, let's stay to the first row. My first couple of questions were for the first two vehicles. There, there was a Mercedes you referenced. Behind the Mercedes, there is, you can see a tire and a headlight and a, a, a white fender. Do you know what kind of vehicle that was?
The Subaru Crosstrek.
And was that on display for sale?
Was not.
And why was that on site?
For repair as well.
And now back behind it, I see another wheel and a red fender. Is, is, you know what kind of vehicle that is?
Yeah, it'd be a BMW three series.
And was that a vehicle you were displaying for sale?
No, it was a vehicle we were working on to get ready for sale.
So you occasionally purchase cars that you repair, make them available, ready for sale?
Correct.
All right, and that was one of those?
Correct.
All right, and did there a point come in time where you repaired it and placed it on display for sale?
Yes, that car has since been sold.
The blue car behind it, you see it, the rear of the car, was that being displayed for sale?
Oh, that was not.
And was that a vehicle your company owned?
Uh, no, never have.
And I guess one more in that, may have missed this, actually, I think there's a couple. I see a black vehicle close to the, the bay. How many bays do you have in that, in your shop?
Three bays.
And how many vehicles can be repaired at the same time?
Um, three at the, simultaneously three.
How many mechanics does he have?
Three.
So how are you working on all these cars at once?
They continuously go in and out of the building. So we work on anywhere from ten to twenty cars per day for people that are normal patrons and service customers.
Thank you.
Do you also take any vehicles in from any other dealerships to repair them for them?
We do.
And can you name some?
Particular vehicles or particular dealerships?
Dealerships that you work with, that you, you'll get their vehicles to repair them.
Yep, there's East Windsor Auto on Route Five in East Windsor, Connecticut. There's M Sport Motor Works located in Waterbury. Those are the two most common.
All right, and this, I see a vehicle near the bay, it's a black, black color vehicle, you know what vehicle that is?
It's really hard to make out what it is.
Okay. And on the, now I'll go all the way to the left side. I, there's a, a silver sedan, station wagon hatchback type vehicle. Can you see that vehicle?
I can, it looks like it's a silver Subaru Outback.
And, and is that being displayed for sale?
It is not.
Is it, is that a vehicle your company owned?
No.
And it was on site for repair?
Correct.
All right, I'll go down to the next set of pictures. Here's another one. And this is for the, for the sake of the, for the commission, it's twelve of, twelve of twenty. And I see a, a, a white vehicle. Is that the same vehicle that in the prior photograph, you could just see a tire and a white fender that you identified?
Exactly.
All right. And that, you've already testified, that's a vehicle that your company did own and wasn't on display?
Correct.
All right, and how about this red vehicle?
Oh, that was the one that referenced in the prior picture that we were getting ready for sale, that has since been sold.
And there's no license plate in the back of that, that vehicle, correct?
That's correct.
The, the white vehicle, on the other hand, there is a Connecticut license plate on it?
Yep.
All right, now, there's a black, black vehicle here. Was that one that you, that, can you identify that now?
Yeah, that's a Honda Fit. Yeah, it's a Honda Fit.
All right, was that a vehicle your company owned?
No.
It was there for repair?
Correct.
How about the, the vehicle to the right of it?
That was also a service customer. They deemed it not worthy of fixing. So it was parked there, waiting for the tow truck to come take it, to bring it to the junkyard.
And I'll go to the, to the far right of this photograph. It looks, it looks like an Audi symbol. Is that a, is that a black or a dark Audi?
Yeah, it's a black Audi S five.
And were you displaying that for sale?
We were. That car is.
Did it have a sticker on the window?
Um, I can't see in the picture, but I believe it did.
And how about this white car next to it?
It looks like a white three series.
And are you familiar with that car? Was it on display for sale?
Was not displayed for sale. It looks like one of the wholesale vehicles may have worked on for another dealership.
And how could you tell it looks like that?
Uh, because it wasn't one of my vehicles, there's no plate on it, so I'm assuming it was another dealership's vehicle we were working on.
And how about the silver car next to it?
Oh, that was a customer vehicle, it's Buick.
I, I see three pickup trucks, at least I think that's what they are, that are all parked. And behind the vehicles you've already identified, were any of those vehicles on display for sale?
No, all three of those are customer vehicles.
Right.
Excuse me, I, I just had a question of, of either Attorney Needleman or Linda. Back at, at the beginning of the presentation, you were talking about. Outside storage of vehicles, and was there a limit on that somewhere that you had mentioned?
I believe you.
Overnight storage.
Yes, so you're making reference to section six point eleven and section four point one D four J J. So far. Neither counsel nor the owners have addressed those issues yet. And that is part of the. Violations that have been noted for you.
And what was the total vehicles?
They're, they're actually, looking at the. Furbage, there is no number. It says that service, repair or storage of motor vehicles. May be permitted as long as the overnight storage. Of all motor vehicles takes place within the confines of a building.
Okay, so, so we're not, we're not disputing that some of those cars in those pictures are for repair. Is that, is that correct?
Right, we have never, we've never disputed that.
Now that we spent all that time on that, but, so aren't these all supposed to be stored inside then during overnight then?
Well, that's what the regulations state.
Okay, so maybe, maybe you can. Maybe Mr. Slater can address that, because we're not disputing that they have cars that they are repairing. But I, there's no way he can fit all those cars in that building at night.
He's not required to if it existed as a non-conforming use. You wouldn't ever be able to put a small repairer, the, the business at this location today, no one. I don't think anyone in this board has ever seen anyone operate a, a small car repair business. And have built a warehouse to put all the vehicles into it, so today. But let me, I'll, I'll share my screen on that one. And what you'll see is if the primary use in the building is. And let me just show you that section of the regulations. Zoom in on that. So six point one one. The critical words there are outside storage of registered vehicles excluding dealer or repairer plate registrations. Not related to uses in permanent buildings on a site. That's the critical language. That's the critical language. The use, if you have an existing use, which in this case is a repairer building, this is permitted for two reasons. One, it's a pre-existing use from nineteen sixty nine. Um and uh before there even uh the zone even existed. Uh and it would be, even if it were subject to this regulation. If it was a permitted repairers building, the outside storage is related to a use in the building. That is a repair business, uh and that is quite common, now frankly, I don't think if this were raw land today. Um and someone was proposing to put a uh a a used car. Uh repair business at this location, you might not authorize it. Uh but the the fact of the matter is, is it existed um per the nineteen sixty nine um approval. And and you saw the map of the of the existing uh facility in nineteen seventy. So uh there is no requirement that if your primary use requires the storage of those vehicles. Uh that these sections would apply, even if it applied to these folks, and it does not apply to these folks because they're a pre-existing, nonconforming use. Um and I would go back as far, I looked at aerial photographs, um and there's a, there's a gap. Um in them. That. Yes.
Attorney Slater, before you go back, can you go back to the other?
Sure, sure, hold on one moment.
Okay, so what about the buffer and screening, doesn't that apply to the to the site also?
No, that's following the colon. Um and first of all, if it's a nonconforming business that existed, uh then no, if you adopt the regulations. You you could, you could say, today, you could say, nobody can sell, nobody can have a repairer's business. In the town of Bloomfield, you could do that today, your regulations could turn it into a prohibited use. All the existing repair businesses could continue as the as they did prior to the adoption of the zoning regulations.
But doesn't the buffer and screening paragraph relate to the the vehicles that are on site regardless?
No, um it says outside stores excluding. Um dealer or reg- really registration and not related to uses in permanent buildings on a site may be permitted under the following conditions. So it's only those vehicles that 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 are not related to the permanent, um the outside storage. Registered vehicles outside, you you couldn't operate this kind of business, you could not have a three bay garage and operate it. Um and and without being able to have vehicles on site and these, and that's if you were to establish it. These regulations were not in place nineteen sixty nine.
Being said, you know, under dealers and repairs, they allow six vehicles, well, they used to allow six vehicles for sale. So if you got a dealers and repair on a property, you were allowed to sell six vehicles. And you have six for uh display, so. This site, you know, you say it couldn't be done, but if it was a repair facility, even if everything was inside. The state would allow them to have six cars for sale, but the zoning would require buffering. A buffer of some kind, isn't that true?
No, not if not for a pre-existing use, if you established a a pre-existing use, this actually prohibits. Uh the outside storage all altogether, um unless you have a number of criteria. But it has an exception um for those, if it's not outside storage of registered vehicles, not related to uses in permanent buildings. Maybe prevented permitted as following. So these are vehicles related to the use in a permanent building, the building is a car repair shop, that's why those vehicles are there, they're not there for any other purpose. Uh and so so not only does the language accept it, but the language doesn't apply. Because it was a pre-existing, nonconforming use.
Yeah, but but didn't, didn't somebody along this process agree to these regulations?
Sure, the zoning commission, yeah, there's only, like I say, the zoning commission next month could adopt a regulation that says there shall be.
No, 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 the chain, the chain of regulations going back to Don Evans. Didn't somebody along the way say, okay, you let us have the cars and we'll only keep so many up here and the rest we'll keep in the back?
No, only related to the sales. If you look at every single document, there's a limitation regarding sales, they limited when, where, the original one said they have to be in the back. Um and so and we will allow you to the back, in nineteen eighty nine, they expanded it to allow the the number of vehicles. For display for sales, you will not see a, the zoning enforcement officer hasn't submitted a single document. And there isn't one in the in the file that limits the vehicles that can be on the site related being repaired, it just simply does not exist.
So what you're saying is your client's vehicles, I'll say, let's use number thirty, that most of these vehicles were being repaired, repaired. And they didn't uh they didn't have license plates or stickers, is that your argument?
It's not my argument, it's a fact, uh the most of the vehicles that are on the site are therefore, are there for repair.
Okay, and did, did the zoning enforcement officer ever walk through the property? The prior and and check the vehicles for registration?
M- Mr. Uh my client indicated that Mr. DeMato never spoke to him.
How about uh Mike, the previous uh one? None, none of the zoning enforcement?
No, that's so Mr., I was referring to Mr. DeMato, Mr. Mr. DeMato took those photographs that are the site of this, and he did not speak to them about which ones were for sale. Or were for.
There there were previously cease and desist orders, I think Mr. Casella had one. Also, um there's one that was dated for two thousand and nineteen.
Right, and and I expect, and there was a two thousand dollar penalty uh that was paid, as as Attorney Needleman said. So there must have been a violation in terms of the uh the the number of vehicles, where they were stored or or how many vehicles were on site. More than twenty-five for sale, or they were putting too many in either the north or the south location, so. Um I if the the court file doesn't speak to exactly where there were or how many there were. I can only infer that there must have been a violation of the special permit, and the special permit limits the number of vehicles that are allowed for sale.
And and your client is saying that every uh every vehicle that is for sale has a. A yellow sticker on the window.
That's correct, he's he, he said that 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 there might be an instance in which, and you can elaborate on that, but. Uh but that is the, that is the intent, in fact, that's what I wanted to start working with Mike DeMato on, was to make it easier because. And and I've talked to them and they've actually already implemented uh some of that, um but I was going to work with Mike in terms of.
How, but how come that wasn't done, that was, that was the whole purpose of us giving you a continuance for. From March seventh to tonight, and we expected that by tonight. We'd be able to get a report that you guys had worked together and that they were working towards compliance.
And it did happen, Mike and I had, we had, we had two conversations about that, and the most, the more, most recent of them. Um he wanted more information, he he believed that the dealer, that the the. DMV permit that they had only permitted to sale and not the repair, and I told him I didn't believe that was true when I was going to research it. And then in turn, I asked him because I wanted to come up with a drawing to show the areas. Um specifically where the vehicles were and would have my client not commingle. Uh as we went through those photographs, there were a couple of instances where there were two or three cars that were uh on display for sale, and then there was one that was not. So I wanted to do that, so, so Mike and I, that's why I I I told you when I started my presentation, I'm, I was shocked that I'm here now. Uh because Mike and I hadn't completed that, we still had, we have, you know, sixty-five days of extensions that we can grant. So my expectation is, you know, I've, I got an email from him, sorry, I didn't get back to you, I'm not going to be involved in the hearing on Monday, and that's what I saw on Friday when I was at the airport. And because my expectation, because we hadn't connected back after two conversations, he was busy and that we were going to do exactly what we did last time. Um and that it would just, we, I would grant you another continuance, and he and I would continue uh on those efforts. And I just got the message, and that's when I spoke to Attorney Needleman about getting an an extension in order to be able to work with the current enforcement officer to that same effect. Uh and he indicated he wasn't in favor of the last extension and that. Um and that he couldn't, you know, be assured that I would get one tonight, so I couldn't put my clients in jeopardy. And show, you know, even though I was at parents' weekend and wait until tonight and ask you for more time, only they have you saying no, so. I they, we were engaging in good faith efforts to do exactly that, to try to make it easier for for the zoning enforcement officer. Uh to be able to discern between the two kinds of vehicles.
Okay.
And I and I'll show you the 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 other section of the regulation, um and I call, w- would you? These are very similar to form-based regulations that um the town of Canton is one of the towns I represent, so they're very modern. Uh style regulations, uh and I'm going to stop sharing, I'm going to go to the other section of the regulations that was, that was referenced. Okay, so the other, the section four D that was referenced in in the enforcement order. Um is also a. That's a regulation, now, you know, this is a zone, the Bloomfield Center District B C D. Um these are very modern regulations. These are not same regulations in place in nineteen sixty nine, and now if someone wished to come in and wanted to. Establish a repair business, uh one thing that section uh four. And I'm going to go down to, I believe it's either I I or J J, uh J J. Um and right now, if you were to do this, um and this was, it's got a date beside it, which is three twenty-eight thirteen. Um it says it's service repair or storage may be permitted as long as the overnight storage of all vehicles takes place within the confines of the building. So that's exactly what I'm talking about, in that zone today, the way the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to see that area developed. For raw land, or if, you know, there were, if somebody else wished to uh do a repair business. You've got to create a business, a building big enough uh that everything could be inside, and maybe a specialty, you know. Sports car place could justify this constructing a business building large enough to bring the building in. But that's as of two thousand and thirteen, this goes back to nineteen sixty nine, uh and Connecticut general statutes. Eight dash two protects any nonconforming use, can adopt the regulation after the fact and tell somebody. It's now you're in violation because you're, you're, now you have, you know, overnight, um you have building. Uh vehicles that are not within the confines of the building, this two thousand thirteen regulation simply does not apply. When nineteen sixty nine service center, so so that they, you know, I again, was hoping to work with the enforcement officer to find a way. Um that to clarify some of the misunderstanding and some aspects of of the the findings. Um and also to try to make it easier going forward for an enforcement officer to be able to identify. Um the areas where the vehicles are for sale and that they're not commingled, um which is something uh that, you know, I would. Though I I can, I could work on with the enforcement officer, but now, you know, was put in a position to be able to proceed uh tonight.
I mean, when you look at those photos, I mean, that's an eyesore, very close to the center of town, so. Um I think, you know, all of us would like to resolve this issue, and we'd like to see. We'd like to see uh them clean up that site. I'm sorry, Linda?
Sorry, I I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I know when they receive uh the license through the state of Connecticut, a site plan is required. How many vehicles were they approved through the state of Connecticut to be on site?
I don't know, I just got permission, I just got the uh the, and I'm not sure that the that the, that they do a account for that. But they might, but that's something I could look at, when I spoke to Mike.
Yeah.
Mike and I talked, uh Mr. DeMato, the the former acting zoning for uh enforcement officer. Um he was questioning whether or not there there could be any repair unrelated to a sale, and I thought that um that there could. And so that's what I I was working on sort of for my portion of the hallmark, and just for the sake of the record. Um it's uh the uh the the regulations are fourteen dash uh uh five. Um sorry, the statute is fourteen dash fifty-one, um subpart A one to two has to do with. Uh the type of permit uh that would allow for the sale and repair of motor vehicles. And then the local regulations, or sorry, the the DMV regulation is fourteen dash sixty-three dash eleven. So if you just have a repairer's license, you can't sell, but if you have a dealer's license, uh then you can sell and you you can repair. And I'd be happy to look into that, um and I'd also be happy to work with the enforcement officer in in terms of. Um you know, coming up with a plan that would delineate the way vehicles are are displayed in in front of the property.
Used car and repair dealer with the state of Connecticut, now, it's it's used cars um.
Um Madam Chair.
Yes.
We've been going, Mark Needleman, um we've been going close to two hours now, and I've heard counsel. Uh indicate on several occasions that um. It hoped to have additional time to work with staff to get this resolved. Um and has questioned how many of the vehicles on the site. Are for sale as opposed to uh being there for repair purposes. Um I have a suggestion which you and perhaps Attorney Slater. Uh would agree to when I say you, the commission, um and that would be to continue this hearing. Um and arrange for an immediate inspection of the property. Between staff and the owner, uh to go through it, um if counsel wishes to be there, certainly, you know. Uh that's not a problem, um to determine exactly. What vehicles are. Present for sale, which vehicles are there for repair, which areas are referenced. In the permit as being north side, south side, front of and the rear. Um consistent with what counsel indicated in terms of. Uh the desirability of delineating those areas with particularity. Uh to avoid future uh issues with respect to placement of for-sale vehicles. Um I mean, we've heard enough here tonight, in my opinion, but it's the opinion of the commission. To realize that there there is some confusion here, uh clearly, councils indicated that there are pre-existing. Approvals that come into play, and generally speaking, I would agree that those principles do come into play. Um but again, i- it's a question of facts, and I'm not sure we all have enough facts. To make an informed decision at this point, and if the commission were interested, I think it could ask Attorney Slater. Whether or not his clients would agree uh to continuing this matter until your next meeting. Um subject to uh there being a an immediate, when I say immediate, in the next couple of days. Um meeting between the owner, their reps and the town and its reps. Uh on the site to once and for all uh uh at least determine which areas we're dealing with. And what vehicles are deemed to be uh under repair or present for repair. Uh as opposed to those that are either for sale or in the process of being sold.
And that that is agreeable to us, in fact, I wanted to go one step further because I really appreciated when I I spoke to. Uh Mr. DeMato and and have the same perspective from uh Ms. Loriano. Is I like to come up with a plan so that, as I say, that there would be better delineation on the site. Uh so that when a zoning enforcement officer looks, they'd be able to see those are the ones that are for sale. And and we appreciate what the board is saying in terms of. Uh you know, more attractive, I mean, the reality of of a uh used, used uh repair place, it's not going, you know. It's not this is going to be as attractive as something that you might approve today, but I think we can, we could do that, I would agree with that, that continuance to accomplish that. Um definitely have an inspection this week, I hate to commit to the next two days, because I my, I haven't looked at my calendar, but we would try to do it within the next two days. But certainly this week.
Mark, can we uh, can we, can we put a limit on that of of five days? Mark, can we, can we, can we put a limit on that of of five days or seven days?
We you you could indicate that it's the expectation of the board that it take place within next number of days. And and if it doesn't. Then obviously you can take that into consideration. In your future decision making.
Okay. All right. What is the rest of the board feel?
I I think that's reasonable, I I don't know if Linda wanted to add something to that. See, she was trying to get something in there, but.
Well, you know, it's going to be continued, I I believe we can, we can speak and and talk to the attorney, I just wanted to state that I understand that. There is no number on the car repair or there's no indication in any of the records that we have or that we've seen so far. That indicates the amount of repair vehicles mixed in with the sale, but it doesn't mean that it was permitted as well. It doesn't mean that, you know, you were allowed to have additional forty vehicles on the property because it doesn't really indicate it here. So it it doesn't just grant them the right to have an X amount of number of vehicles, that's all I meant, like there's a an area where it's just not clear. But anyway, we can definitely work together. I hope to hear from him soon and coming up with a solution. Again, by the look of it and and dealing with other approval of locations and used car dealer and repair shop in the past. I do know that there is a limit and there are requirements even through the state of Connecticut, which is not. You know, with us, but we can definitely work together with the applicant to make them understand that and to come with a solution where, you know. We can. Comply in in some ways, you know, with with our with the regulations and determine the the amount of vehicles that are for sale. It's it's just undetermined at this time and I I agree that we should continue this. Work with the applicant and hopefully come before you with with a better plan.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, Mark Needleman, again, I think a couple of the issues that need to be addressed as. The parties work. Would be state regulations concerning. The number of vehicles that can be placed. Any site plan requirements which have not been addressed by anyone. So far, and I think they should be to the extent they're applicable. Whether they be under the town's regulations or the state's regulations. I'd also remind everyone that there was some signage. Provisions limiting one eighth and a half by eleven. Presumably that would be the warranty sticker. But we've also seen there are additional stickers on the car which would go beyond the terms, so that should be also discussed. So I think those matters are something the commission is going to want to hear about at its next meeting.
And just on that last point, we do not believe and we'll talk to the zoning enforcement officer, we not believe the DMV required warranty sticker is a for sale sticker, the for sale sticker is. Is the year sticker that's placed on that and and so that we can discuss that with the enforcement officer. And she was very kind to call me today and thank you for doing that and I will, I'll call you tomorrow, we'll work on getting it scheduled, so it it sounds like there's consensus from the. On the board, but I won't speak for the board, but if you.
So the board. Does somebody, does everybody agree that we should continue it and I was thinking five business days? Unless somebody is thinking something different.
No, I agree that we can continue it and I I'm agreeable to that. I was thinking more like seven business, seven days.
I was thinking five business would be seven.
Seven, right, okay. The only question I have is, is there a time limit for a public hearing to be closed?
Thirty thirty five days in order without our without an extension and we have an additional thirty five or thirty plus days because. We we you had an extension, I don't even know if you needed time to extend to today, you might not have needed any extra days. Because you need sixty five days to start the hearing, once the hearing opens, you have thirty five days to close it. And we have a total of sixty five days to give you extension, so. What I was understanding the chair was going for is how quickly we had to meet with the zoning enforcement officer. My expectation was you were going to continue this hearing to the next meeting.
Right, which would be May second, not May first.
Okay.
And and that extension Attorney Slater is is one that also your client agrees to grant the town, is that correct?
Well, yes, is it, but the public hearing started tonight, so we don't even, we're in agreement to continue it, absolutely, you just don't even need to give you any days to do it.
Okay, so my suggestion was just that they they meet with the zoning enforcement officer within the next. Five business days.
And that is acceptable to the applicant.
Okay, so. Do I have somebody that wants to make a motion to continue the hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue a hearing and company seeing everything that was agreed here.
I I seconded.
Wait, wait, who seconded, okay, surely I heard. And all in favor of the motion?
Good night, everyone, and thank you very much.
So it was, did everybody agree to that? Okay, just want to make sure. All right, thank you. And that was, and that was five business days to me.
Ma- Madam Chair, I'm just not sure there was a formal vote and the vote was announced.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was. There was a vote. It was, the motion was made, it was seconded and the vote was five people. In favor of it.
Thank you.
Zero against it.
Thank you.
Are we clear that? The eleventh is the fifth day, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, so the second. Is the application of Paul Benny.
He's here, let me just.
I'm sorry, I'm here, I'm unmuted now, can you hear me?
I can, so Paul, can you state your name and address for the record and then tell us what you are, what you'd like to do or what you need here?
Yes, thank you, my name is Paul Benny, I live at one twelve Terrifield Road. And that's in Bloomfield, that's the section of road on the Simsbury side of the road after it closed off. And you may remember me from last month, I came and asked to move my property line over. Forty feet from one oh eight Terrifield Road, which I also own that property up here. And I didn't realize when I was asking to put a new garage up here that there was a height restriction for detached garage. I had submitted some sketch, a sketch and some other things to Linda, I don't know if anybody's able to see that, I'm just on my iPhone, so I I can't present it. But but basically I was just looking to.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Paul Benny, Linda Loriano.
Hi Linda.
Hi, I I I can share it if if the commission, if the board would like me to share it, I know it was sent last minute. So the the board members.
Because I can't get to that and do it at the same time.
So would you like me to share it?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, so I'm going to share it, Mr. Benny, and you can proceed to speak when it's up on the screen.
If you just go to the next page down. I I'm not a new resident of Bloomfield, I've lived on this property since nineteen eighty six. I acquired the property at one oh eight Terrifield Road, I think in about, I can't remember exactly when, but it was about two thousand and seven, I bought it from Jack Yurkis. I'm planning on retiring up here, the garage, I bought the house when the driveway came right down into the garage and. It had already been undermined when I bought the property, my intention was to. Correct the water problem up here, which I have to a certain extent, except for. Getting a new garage in and and I wanted to build it up about eight to twelve inches so that I have a natural swell. For the water coming down to push it to the right of that picture down into the stream, if you're familiar with the property, you know. Most people up know that I've put a lot of money into trying to take care of the water, I've put trap rock drains all around the house. I even put a, I even put a street drain, a six inch street drain up here to get the water at the top of my driveway. The garage here was put in around nineteen fifty, that was before the second floor had been put on the house. From what I understand, I again, I didn't move in until nineteen eighty six. All I'm really looking to do is. Put a new garage and I wanted to match the style of the house, Linda, if you, I think one or two pages in. I sort of put a picture of the house and sort of my view of wanted, what I wanted to put, I I really. Wanted to try and match the style of the Dutch colonial house and that would mean that it would, you know, with raising, nothing's. Level here, everything, you know, I'm on the Terrifield Board, so it's a very, very steep property. And what I was hoping to do was be able to just put a detached garage that matches the house, I was going to match the siding, I was going to match the roof and. I know that there's a height restriction, but coming from an engineer, I'm an engineer myself, I've been. An aerospace engineer over UTC or Raytheon now for thirty seven years, the roof line of trying to join that to the house, it just would. It wouldn't make sense from an engineering or a maintenance or an architectural standpoint. And the shared wall would be right where all my kitchen appliances are, it's a very unique property, and so I was just hoping that. I could convince everybody to allow me to put a garage, sort of raise the foundation a little bit, just so I have a natural swell. I don't want to put it any further back because I'm up against my leach field on the back. And then a very steep hill after that, and there are town records, I did put this whole septic engineered septic system in myself or not myself through. You know, I had it put in by a contractor in nineteen eighty seven when I bought the property or one year after I bought the property. And so I was looking for this hardship to be able to. Just put this garage in that matches the house. And, you know, none of this, the existing house, if you go a little further, I think I measured it this morning at twenty three feet. I would keep the garage below that, that drawing I drew to the right, I just didn't have a three D CAD system to draw it home on. It would be, I would keep the roof line below the existing house or. I'd like to match it, but at least I would keep it a little bit below if that would be. The requirement, I'm sort of looking for permission tonight to at least get some architectural drawings. Done for the property so that I can get a garage and I just think the existing ranch style garage, it just looks terrible against the Dutch colonial house and. I'm not looking to put an apartment, I would have an upstairs to the garage, the only thing I would be using it for is I have a small recording studio in my basement. It's been down there for thirty five years and I'm looking to move it above the garage just so I can give the laundry room. To, you know, to the basement and that's sort of my pitch for the garage. Nobody would see it up here, I own all the property up here, my neighbor's fine with it at one oh eight Terrifield. And the only, really, you would never see it until you drive up to my property anyways, so. That's sort of my pitch, are there, are there any questions about it or?
So you're, you're asking for how many feet? Up to twenty three?
Well, I I think it would look best, the the side Dutch Colonials are twenty. Feet, at least on the side that I'm showing here, that I took the picture, the garage is twenty by twenty now, I'm hoping to. I wanted to go twenty four, but if I'm really restricted by the height to keep the same natural architectural roof line. I could probably go twenty two wide by maybe twenty four deep, moving the front of the garage a little bit forward. What I was hoping to do is get some, and I would have, you know, as an engineer myself, I would have some structural plans put, you know, in place, I'm on a very steep hill up here. There is, they, it looks like they filled the existing garage with sand, I would also be looking to dig a little of that out. And probably put a little more hard pack in there as I fill it up maybe eight inches just to get a natural. You know, push to the right to get the water away from the house, it's very difficult for me to travel right now. At certain times of the year when there's a lot of water, I need to be here just in case that drain in front of the garage clogs and. And and it can be a real issue, the leach field is right behind the garage.
So the total height is, is what is the total height you're proposing, it doesn't really say it here, it just says to. Feet in height. I want it, I want a total.
Sure, well, looking at the picture that we're looking at now, the peak of the house from the door, let's say, because everything's on a hill here. Is twenty three feet, I would not exceed that, I would like to come close to matching it, but I would be a little bit below. Because as you can see, the house has been lifted up a little bit on that side, so I would be less than the existing height, at least on the, what we would say is the south side of the house.
Anybody on the board have questions? Alan?
Yeah. I really have no problem with, you know, extending the height. Unless Linda does, but. On a side note. You really need to talk to the wetlands agent in town before you spend a lot of money on this project.
I I absolutely agree with you and I did grab a permit and I will, I I I think it's, is it Mister Castillo, is it or?
Yep.
He he knows me well, because when I first moved into the property and they did the two turnarounds up here. We filled in my backyard with about six hundred yards of fill and I've I've managed to hold it, so he knows me well.
Okay, I I mean, I'm I'm just telling you that, you know. Because I'm concerned that you're going to spend a lot of money and run into some issues. I I'm not saying that, but you know, you need to do that, but I really have no problem with height limit there.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else have any, any comments or or have any questions of the applicant?
I I don't have any questions, I just. I'm like Alan, I don't have any problems with the height of it, it looks like it's. It's been mapped out pretty well, so. I I don't have any issues with it at all.
That if it's okay, I will pursue, I I totally agree with the wetlands issue, I know there's a stream there. And I want to engineer this right, I certainly, I mean, I'm an aerospace engineer, I worked, I've worked on jet engines for thirty seven years now. I want to map this outright, make sure that we hold it in here properly so it doesn't slip off the hill, so. If if it's okay, I'll. I'll get ahold of Mister Castillo and and work the wetlands issue too at the same time. And I guess what I'm wondering is that, and I don't know if I'd get it in this year, but. I'm looking to use a place like the barnyard where I can really get some structural drawings done and architectural drawings, is that? Would I get permission to do that now while I work with the wetlands or or should I wait on on giving a deposit to a company like that?
If you have to go into wetlands, then you're going to have to get approval from wetlands once you get approval, you know. From us.
So do that first then, do that first then, okay.
You're eighteen feet from the stream and the regulated area is, I don't know what kind of stream, it gives a hundred to two hundred.
Hundred, isn't it?
Yeah, so you're within a regulated area, I would talk to Peter first before you start spending money on plans.
I would get his sign off, because he might decide that you need to go to the wetlands commission as well. But that would be, you know, between you and him, once, once we're done tonight.
Sure.
I just want to make sure there, Linda, there's nobody in the audience for this application, correct?
That's correct, Linda Loriano, zoning enforcement officer, yes, that is correct, no opposition or or no comments regarding this proposal, it was posted and noticed. And. I just, you know, with my my only, you know, suggestion would be that. He actually gives gives us accurate measurements to ensure that. It won't exceed, secondly, that the structure wouldn't be, the footprint is not bigger than the house. And just to ensure, I know he wants to kind of move it up and I don't know if that's going to increase the height or. You know, so there there are still some, some things we'd like to see how far from the house it's going to be, it looks like it's pushed up, those renderings look like he pushes it more towards the front. So I'm I'm not sure yet.
And the wetlands is in the back, though. And the wetlands is in the back though, correct?
Yes, it's still gonna be, so he wanted to still remain within the same footprint of, of what is there now. He is um, you know, uh, it, it looks like it's wider, uh, the proposal is a little bit wider than what is there now. Um, I don't know if that's gonna pose any challenges with wetlands, but yes, I would definitely check with our wetlands agent. To ensure that, that structure and what he's proposing, uh, foundation and everything would, would, would be good with our, you know, the wetlands commission. Um, and, and it's gonna be structurally sound for the site. The reason for the second level is because uh, Mr. Benny uh, uh, did um, indicate or his original plan was to kind of expand on this house towards the fact that that's not possible. There was uh, some sort of septic underground there, um, and it, quite frankly, it's, it would have been more of a challenge to kind of expand out and so he, he wanted to, you know, uh, add to the property. And the only way to do that was to have a second story onto his garage. And so we, that, that was what was indicated to, to our office.
Is there something, what were you talking about doing in New York at the time, a Dutch colonial?
Yeah.
Was it different?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure who's speaking on.
It's uh, Sean, right, um. Seth, I mean Seth. That was Seth speaking, but I didn't, I didn't hear you, can you say it again Seth?
Yeah, Seth, you're muted.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good, yeah.
Okay, thank you Seth, anybody else?
I'd just like to ask them a, a question about the second story. Mr. Benny indicated that he wanted to build a second story, but what was it supposed to be used for?
Well, hey Kenny, I'm still there.
Sure, I'm sorry, it currently in my basement, I, I've, I've been a musician for, since I was a kid for almost, you know, fifty-five years now, I have a recording studio in my basement. And there's a couple of us that write music up here, I have been for thirty-five years. And I'm gonna put it up there and I was also a taekwondo student of uh, Master Music Academy in Bloomfield, actually. I've been doing martial arts for almost my whole life and I'm gonna put a few of my exercise equipment up there too, above my garage. I'm not gonna bring water or anything like that, it's not for an apartment or anything like that.
That's what I was wondering whether or not it would be rented out to someone.
No, not at all, no.
Right. It won't have any plumbing or up there, correct?
No, just electricity, I don't, I don't want any plumbing up there, no, it would be too complicated. I don't want a bathroom or anything like that, no.
Okay, um. All right, is everybody all set if, with uh, questions for Mr. Benny? If so, I can close the public hearing.
Yep.
Okay, and do I have somebody that would like to make a motion? We probably do wanna put that, you know, a height restriction or at least, you know, not to exceed. Does anybody wanna take that?
Do you wanna, do you wanna make a motion to close the public hearing?
No, I don't, I just, there's, no, I just, I stayed it. And that's it, it's closed.
Oh, it's closed, okay.
Oh, why, did you have something you needed to say?
No, no, I guess to know the formality, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Oh wait, Linda does wanna say something.
Right, as the, you know, he's owning enforcement officer here, I'd just like to make sure that, you know, um, uh, we don't run into issues later on where um, there is no um, measurement that would be like a certified measurement, I, I don't want this. So the maximum height permitted, I just want to really make this clear, for an accessory structure, including garages, is fifteen feet in height. And that's uh, you know, at the peak center of, of, of the roof. And uh, he's asking for an entire full second floor. Um, I understand that he wants to raise the, the uh, the foundation. Um, or the footings in order to, to have the structure. And I wanna make sure that it's not going to exceed, if, if you grant uh, an exception or a variance tonight for a certain amount of feet. We really don't have a, a set number right now as the, you know, the, the drawings don't really have those kind of architectural uh, numbers and, and that would be my only concern. So if you're granting, you're granting something that's gonna be above fifteen feet. To what height, do we really know that that's exactly twenty? You know, the peak of, of this roof at center here is, is fifteen feet. I, I, I mean twenty-three feet as indicated on the plans. I, I understand he's a, you know, professional engineer uh, by, by trade. Um, but I, I don't know if, if that, you know, I would just be cautious first on um, the number of the feet that you would be allowing uh, an increase on due to the elevation of that.
Would you be happier if we said not to exceed the height of the house?
Well, at, at the, at the center, at the peak of the roof center, yes. Because if you say not to exceed, that means what if, you know, the rooftop goes a little bit higher? But that, yes.
So you, you would prefer it to be that way? Instead of saying twenty-three feet, you'd prefer that the motion be made that not to exceed the, the height of the house?
Of, of the peak of the roof at center, yes. Meaning that, yeah, because it's always a little bit less when, when you, you know, you look at the uh, you know, you look at the pitch. So um, they do measure it to the pitch of the top, so we, we just wanna make sure that um, it's, it's always a little, a little bit less, but yeah.
Okay, and somebody, were, were you gonna make that motion Alan?
Yeah, I moved the, the uh, application for Paul Benny for variance. Uh, requests uh, from section thirty-seven, three point seven B of the Bloomfield zoning regulations. To allow proposed detached garage to ex, not to exceed twenty-three feet or the peak of the existing house. And that's from the ground, not from the foundation.
Okay, and I guess it's also subject to wetlands, but we, I, I don't think we need.
That's, that's a different story.
That's a different story, so, okay.
This is Jennifer and I second that motion.
I'm trying to think, I think, all right. Okay, and all in favor of the motion?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposition? Abstentions? So the motion's granted.
Thank you, thank you very much, I will, I won't do anything until I talk with Mr. Castaldi and I won't do anything until I talk with Linda again, but I really appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is it okay if I sign off, I can sign off, right?
Bye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we pick you up.
Okay, uh, we still have one more here. Okay, application of Global Tech Design LLC. Who is here for that application?
Let me let him in, I apologize. Mr. Mark Mullins.
Okay, so Mr. Mullins, um, this is Chairman Isaacson. Can you state your name and address for the record and tell us uh, what you're proposing here?
Yes, I'm Mark Mullings with Global Tech Design, forty-five Winton Berry Avenue, Bloomfield. Um, for Three Park Avenue. And here in Bloomfield, that's near the intersection of um, Park Avenue and uh, Blue Hills Avenue, uh, I think it's Route one seventy-eight. The proposal is, you see that structure, it's a two-story structure. And it was in the past approved for, as a business, as also residential, it's in a gateway zone. And it was a here salon on the first level and a dwelling on the second level. What the new owners purchased that structure and what we're proposing to do. The second level did not have privacy for a dwelling. So what we're proposing to do is to separate the egress. Um, so we'll have the existing egress, which is on the left-hand side of the diagram. You'll see the axis going up to the.
We have a picture.
I'm on my cellphone because I had to leave my office because I didn't know what time we're gonna get.
Let me see if I, if I can bring it up.
I wasn't sure if you were gonna get to me, so I um, I left.
Joyce, did you have a question, you have your hand up? You're muted. She's muted. Joyce, you're muted.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I wasn't clear on the last name.
Mullins, M U L. I N G S.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, um, one, one moment, I'm trying to get a picture of. I don't know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna just share.
That's a strange piece of land.
One a lot, um. Hold on, I have street view and I just wanna bring up G I S as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, I'm almost there, bear with me, screen save. So I'm gonna share a couple of screens with you. First, this is the subject parcel, um, a twenty-twenty aerial photo from G I S. These are the boundaries, it's showing, this is the existing structure. This is uh, in the back, there is uh, access via ramp. Um, and also in there and in the front through here, this is a walkway to the existing main entrance there. Um, I also want to show you the site survey that was submitted um, recently, a few days ago. Of the property, um, I do not know, let's, let's go back. Hello again. This is, this is the site survey. So as you could see, this is the frontage of the property where I was showing you. It's really hard, it's a very unique lot, but this is the frontage of the property. Um, this is the setback of twenty-five feet. Front yard.
The front setback, okay.
Yep, you see the setback here, uh, this is the existing porch. And this is the existing walkway, this is a proposed walkway, the proposed stairway. And um, the landing here for a new proposed entry door. Um, so I'm gonna go back to the aerial, uh, the street image of the property. So you have a visual of the front of the property now. So. Quite challenging right now. Okay, there it is. Um, that's, this is the frontage that it's shown on the site survey, this is the existing entrance. This is where they want a secondary um, uh, entryway, so this.
They want both entryways?
Yeah, they wanna separate, um, you know, uh, is my understanding. And I'm not sure if it's because they're separated inside or, you know, if this goes to a different use or not. Um, but as you can see, um, this is a covered entryway. And in the site survey, it shows you, this definitely projects, it's outside of, it's within the front yard setback. So the reason for uh, their variance is to allow for a second entryway that is within the setback as well. Um, so it's, it's a non-conforming, an addition of a non-conforming uh, entryway. Even if they expand it this way and it would be one entryway, it would still expand the footprint of the non-conforming, so that is why we're here before you.
Right.
Um, and so my understanding is that they want two separate entryway, which was the site plan that you just uh, I, I recently shared, um, if I can get back to it, can you see that? Not sure, are you able to see this plan? That I'm sharing, yes.
We're just seeing the picture of the front.
Now. How about now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so.
Existing porch, um, and so it doesn't have.
So it, it looks like, uh, it looks like they want to have two separate, but that um, it wouldn't come out further than, than what they have for the first one, it's just that it's non-conforming. So we're expanding it.
Exactly, exactly.
Correct.
That's exactly.
Okay, 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 just so we're all on the same page, go ahead and uh, go back and um, can, you know, continue with what you were saying, Mark.
Yes, thank you, and I, let me apologize, I, as I said, I had to leave the office because I wasn't sure if you were gonna get to me. But yeah, so what happens is on the, the existing egress on the left-hand side. Um, that's going up to the residential area, so there was no privacy there, so we want, just wanna create that privacy. So when um, we're apply, dealing with clients is down below, um, on the first level. We're not necessarily the invasion of privacy, that's what we're trying to provide. So we would just wanna have a um, independent egress um, to the first floor and one for the second level, that's what we're requesting our proposal is.
And there isn't any other place you can do that besides in the front there?
Unfortunately, no, no, that's, uh, because what we did in the back, we had to reconfigure the back for handicap accessibility to come into the, into that area. And that was done original, with the original owner, so that was not taken into consideration, um, so now we do need that, yes.
You, you do have an entrance in the back, a handicap?
Yes, that's where the handicap comes in through, yes, for handicap accessibility.
Can't everybody come in through there instead of having another entrance in the front?
Well, that's the challenge, because it would be so costly to restructure that whole area in the back. And when we looked at the, they did a feasibility study on it, realized that the front would be the most adequate way to come through uh, to get to that area.
But you still have to have the accessibility in the back. There's something I'm missing, I guess, if you already have an entrance in the back that's accessible for uh, handicap accessible. Why do you need another entrance in the front that isn't gonna be accessible?
I, I think he was saying for the privacy, I think it was a privacy issue.
Right.
Right, but there's another way in, so why?
Okay, what I'm, what I'm saying, the, the first, that the door on the left, the access on the left.
Correct.
For, for example, I want to live on the second level.
Okay.
And so getting in there, I don't need to see all the clients down below that we're dealing with for the here salon. So the problem we have before, you could see folks going up and down, going to their residence. So that's why we have to separate that. Going to their residence. So that's why we have to separate that. That's why we're doing it that way. At the same time, we're making it also very curb appealing with this, um, the new look that we're proposing.
Um.
And I wish I had a chance to show the renderings and so forth, but uh I'm I'm not at my office to do that.
Okay, so Shirley, I think you are next, but then I think Linda had something she wanted to say as well, so we'll go with.
I just wanna ask the question. Um, Jackie, I'm kind of with you. I don't understand why of of another front interest. Because you can't park on Park Avenue there. You have to park in the back of the building. So even if you're, you're renting the top floor, you've still got to park in the back and go up the back steps unless you walk all the way around. So I'm not sure why you need the second entrance. When you already have, when you already have one. In the back, you get out of your car and you just go in the, in the back.
So what we're trying to do, if if I may just explain it again, even with the the rear entrance. And the fr- front entrance is designed to accommodate the clients. That's what we're trying to appease. So we're not interfering for scoring of residential space on the second level. And we do, as as a business person, we're trying to make sure we can, we're not interfering. We're trying to separate the two, even though we, we have to coexist. And I think it lends to showing that, you know, we're providing privacy for the um residents there as well as for the business. And it's, if you see the interior, you will probably understand what I'm trying to say. So we would not suggest it or even propose it if we didn't think it was something that was uh something that was worthy to be done. So that's why we are proposing that. Yeah, it's it's, we just wanna have it separated from all business. That's what we're pleading.
Let me try this again because maybe I'm. So the entrance that's existing now in the front. Means that the people that are going to their private quarters have to go through like a waiting room or something for the other.
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, so why don't you close off that entrance and just make it entrance that's gonna go straight up?
What, for example, if if.
I guess, in the front.
So Madam Chair, if if a visitor comes to visit me, they're not coming through the rear entrance. They're coming to the front of my house.
I understand.
That's what we're trying to accomplish, right? So even if I close off the back, even if I'm coming into my house from the back, going up through the rear. It's a, it's a very tight little era to get up to the rear, from the rear. So when I have. Families or friends coming over, I usually utilize the front entrance, and I think that would be the better way to really. Address that area than taking them through the rear. No, I understand exactly what you're saying.
No.
Pardon me. I I do understand clearly what you're saying. What I'm, what I'm trying to suggest. We could close off that area, but at the same time, if I'm handicapped. Um, if I'm handicapped and I need access, I'm gonna come through the ramps and coming to that waiting area in the back.
Right.
But at the same time, I'm now interfering with me going into the, because it's a common area there now. I'm gonna open it up as a common ear if I do that. And that's what I'm, we're trying to prevent. That's all I'm trying to prevent, yeah.
Alan, I think you had a question.
Yeah, so on the first floor is the beauty salon.
That's correct.
And on the second floor is your apartment?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so when you walk in the back, you come into a a waiting room for the salon, and there must be a staircase that goes upstairs?
That's correct.
Okay, so you can't, you can't reconfigure the interior? So that you can go upstairs that way? And the same with the front?
We could do that, but the cost to actually do that as opposed to doing the front entrance, it's a lot different.
I know.
So it's, yeah.
Why, okay, so in the front, in the front, why can't you go enter on the far right where that single window is? And that would push you back twenty five feet.
Because where that is, that's where the restrooms are. So that wouldn't work in that area.
By that bay window, what's behind the bay window where you're proposing?
Open, so. A good question. Uh, it's an open area. It used to be the living area slash dining that looks from front to back. So that bay area is the really where all the um, the units are gonna be for the here salon. So if I sit where the bay area is, where the whole um salon area is, when I looked where the existing doorway is. All you see is the stairs going right up. So we just wanna create that privacy.
So if you come in where that bay window is, you're gonna go right up a flight of stairs to the bedroom, to the uh, to the.
That's, that's, no, no, no. Where the bay area is, is where the business is. That's what we're trying to do. Separate the, where the bay area is as opposed to where the existing um door is on the left hand side.
Oh, and then you, the the existing door would be his, they would reconfigure.
Correct, my apartment. That's correct.
So I still don't understand why we just don't leave the back entrance for the customers and the front entrance for, for the private. For the private entrance to the apartment. That's what I, that's what I'm not understanding.
Okay, so all right. So let, okay, let me, let me explain this way. The the existing egress that we have right now to the left. That goes straight upstairs. That goes upstairs to the dwelling. There is an opening that, there's an opening there that. Way it was designed originally, it was an open ear. So when I come into that main, that existing store door. When I look out, that would be the living room to my right. And was an open space. So because it's, we're now separating the two as a business and dwelling. We just want to make sure that access to the, my apartment on the second level. I have a free flow without interfering with what's, where the bay window is, if I may explain it that way.
Yeah.
Linda.
That's what I'm trying to explain.
Are you planning to put a wall in?
Like, yes, there's gonna be a wall. Exactly. There will be a wall there. That's correct. It's a separate wall. So I'm not seeing the folks when um service is being provided to them. I have my own egress and then where the bay window is, where that new uh proposed egress is. That would be just for the clients coming in there. So we're not interfering. And the idea again, I if I may emphasize, Madam Chair, just real quick. Is when I have a family or guests come over to visit me, you don't wanna be bringing them to a little winding era. Your front entrance is where we usually uh welcome folks to. So, you know, we're trying to accomplish both of those.
Okay, so if you put a, put a um, another entrance to the business where the bay window is. Is that entrance going to match the one that's on the left?
That's correct, yes. It will have a little canopy, just like the one there, yes. There is um, there is plans to indicate that.
Okay, so I wanted to get Linda's take on this as a staff.
It's ultimately up to the board on.
Right, but I mean, does staff have issues with this? Is it because it is non-complying to begin with, or I mean, um.
I mean, did you look inside the house, Linda?
I have not. That was just my question uh to Mr. Mullins, um, whether or not. Um, you know, there's, it's possible to have an entryway into the salon through there with the wall, you know, with with the door. Indicating the salon. Um, I I don't know, you know, personally, what. What Mr. Mullins hardship uh would be. I I know he mentioned the privacy of of the business. So that's something, you know, for the board to consider. Um, the parking is in the rear. Uh, there is access in the rear. Um, even if it's, um, you know, through a hall and then getting in there. Um, you do have that access point. Um, it's not, you know, something that is required by building codes, so it's not like there's an immediate safety issue. Requiring uh the entrance in the front beside uh privacy if we wanna get really technical. Um, so uh, you know, you're you're gonna have an another similar entrance, maybe just a bit smaller. The footprint of it looks a little smaller. I'm not sure how that scale. It's really hard to say how it's really gonna look. Um. You know, design wise, uh, whether or not it's. Little contrast there.
It's gonna be, yeah, is it gonna be exactly the same? It's gonna be.
Yes.
We don't have that.
We don't have any drawings.
The plans, yes, the plans, so the plans have been submitted. The, the front will, what we're trying to do is um to replicate. Exactly what you see there now. So it would be two little um gable and entrance roofing to enter that section. Without, just imagine it without, just moving the one to the left, to the right, without the bay. So it would just be doors there.
Right, we understand that. We understand this is getting rid of this bay and and that.
Right.
Be right there, yeah.
But your plans, yes, so the plans have been submitted.
Yes, yeah, it would be nice to keep a window um in the front just for aesthetic purposes of the mixed use. Um, so it doesn't fully look, you know, uh, without that transparency. Uh, my suggestion would be that if that is the case, expand this a little and just add the door here, another.
I was wondering about that.
Can we, can we just, you know, move the door so it just kind of looks?
Like a duplex would.
Yes, correct. And and keeping a a more of a window area. Just so that you have the, both of the feel of a residential property and a mixed use property. I just hate to, um, you know, have it uh completely look, um, you know, wi- without.
I was wondering myself if you could just expand that landing and have two doors, one going to the residence that would go right upstairs and one going to.
Right.
The business.
Right, it'll be just expanding it a little bit, um, you know, and and maybe moving the doors. Uh, so it meets code at the same time. I know that, you know, when you open a door, you have to have a certain amount of. Of angle. Um, now I know they have an ADA and ramp in the back, so I mean that. I don't know if it's accessible upstairs or or what the case is. It's really hard. We don't know what the layout of of the inside is and what the real need of uh.
It's.
Uh, the second entry um uh to the business, if we really are gonna start using the front versus. You know.
Madam Chair, if I may just suggest some, the the, what the plans have, that have been submitted. Has a door in that area and they have windows on either side of it. Because we did look at both the, the architecture on Park Avenue, as also those on uh. Blue Hills Avenue, because we wanna make sure we blend it in with whatever the curb appeal on both sides. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. So there are windows there on either side, so.
Jennifer had a question.
Sure.
Jennifer.
I do, I I got a little lost. So help me with this because. Are you saying that the door that's there now, the egress that's there now? That's the side you're going in and then the side where the bay window is, that's the side the customers are gonna go in?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, I got. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got, I got something.
Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, so when you walk in this front door. There must, there's a staircase and a door that goes up to your apartment?
Sure, the the existing door that's there, as soon as you open it, immediately there's a stairwell that goes straight up. That's correct.
Okay, so you can't put a door on that that says private residence and people can go into the salon?
Then that's the, that's the awkwardness of 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 that. Because we wanna make sure it's separated, you know, think of you having your home and then you also have an operation there below. You really wanna separate the two. As a matter of fact, um, the prior owners had that challenge. And they had their residence upstairs and it was a, it was a little cumbersome. So we now wanted to make sure we don't run into that kind of really weird setup. So, you know, I don't really wanna see the customers down below. We just wanna go up to our dwelling area upstairs upstairs. So that's why we're trying to separate that. And if we do it in the back, where there's a little waiting area in the back, that's gonna also interfere. So that's what we're trying to separate the two entities.
Okay, so where I'm headed right now is I'm trying to find a way to vote for this.
Right, and is there a legal hardship here?
The legal hardship can't be monetary.
Right.
No, it's it's.
It's, you can't say it'll cost too much to change the interior.
I I I clearly understand that. I I was just suggesting based on a comment that was made. And so the, because we are over the encroaching over the buildable line. We're requesting permission to create another egress that would be matching the existing one. With just separate entrance to the business and a separate one for.
What's your hardship?
My hardship is that we are encroaching almost seventeen feet.
No, no, no.
Seventeen step back. We're stepping.
Why do you wanna encroach?
I want to encroach so that we can have um a much more easier access going into our structure.
Okay, so the the other part of my comment was gonna be, and I'm a newbie here. But what I've noticed is that in the last few meetings that we've had, decisions of um. Granting variances over the years have come back to bite us. And this is a gateway zone, which has a much stricter uh zoning regulations. So by my question, that's in the back of my mind is, so by us allowing another entrance. And and going past the the uh zoning regulations. What's gonna happen down the road? I mean, I can't, I can't say what's gonna happen down the road, but I'm afraid of what we're creating where I think you have an alternative. Although you don't like it, is to can reconfigure the interiors, either the front door or the back door. That's where I stand, okay?
Jennifer, do you still have your hand up from before? Do you have another question?
I have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I, I wanted to know how, how frequently do your uh customers or clients go in through the front?
That that's the direction they use most of the times. Because the handicap ramp at the back, it it's very lengthy ones, almost forty feet of ramp. Um, so most times they come through the front doors.
Okay.
Yes, that's the way they have been.
Just, there's no stairs in the back. It's just the ramp.
It's a ramp. It's a ramp that goes all the.
Can we see it back again?
Yeah, you, I think there might be one little stoop there, but I think it's a ramp most of the times.
Let me see if this has a more of an image, an aerial from the top. Because it sometimes gives you a a better twenty twenty one. All right, yeah, give me one second. I am going to.
See, um. Okay, can we zoom on that or no? Not really.
Yeah.
No, this is.
Okay, okay.
Looks like this is a, there's a landing here. I don't know if it's because of that.
Do you have to wind your way to get to that, to get to where she's got the arrow?
That's correct, yes.
Yes, okay. And, okay.
It's easier getting to the front than the rear.
Wow, but you gotta park in the rear. You can't park on Park Avenue. Um.
Madam Chair.
I kind of liked, I kind of liked what Linda was saying. Uh, i- is that something that might be feasible about expanding? Um, the, the entrance in the front now and having two doors there instead of, instead of. Um, I I think it's, aesthetically, I think that's gonna look very strange, having two entrances in the front of that house. I mean, that's, that's just my opinion, but aesthetically, I think it's gonna look strange. And if, and her idea, which was to expand.
A little.
What you have there and have two doors there and one going to one and one going to the other, to me seemed like, like a compromise.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question then?
Yes.
If we were to go with um Ms. Jennifer's proposal, is that something you would consider or this commission? is that something you would consider, or this commission would consider? Um, but whatever we do, we just need two entrances at the front. Uh, we know we're encroaching, but we can probably work and expand the, the landing a little bit, so we have uh, a separate egress.
Okay, that, that was, that was Linda who had suggested that.
Linda, yes, okay.
Enforcement officer, Linda, would you be willing to work with him to try to do that?
I would be, and as long as it does not, you know, extend more forward, uh, the encroachment isn't closer to the front of the property line.
But it's gonna probably need to extend, um, a little bit more aside, so it's gonna be wider, which is still encroaching, but, but I think less so.
I, I mean, I, I, I would think that's, uh, very doable if, if the commission finds that. I know, as you mentioned, this is a gateway district. There are design guidelines that you have to follow and, um, and it really has to be uh, aesthetically pleasing, and I, I don't know, you know, yes, it's something that we can work on. Um, now, the challenge would be on how you would like to vote on that to expand, uh, the, the existing structure, um, to allow for a second entrance, um, maybe.
Oh, no.
How far, how far is that from, how far is that from the, uh, back now, the, the door that's there? And we have a measurement from the door to the road, to the property line?
Well, I think it's a stoop, I mean, you've gotta go up those stairs, so you're gonna increase the size of the stairs. You're not gonna go any further, though.
Do we have a measurement here? Wasn't, did I see a site plan or something?
Yeah, let me look at the survey, it doesn't have the dimensions, I mean, um, there is a scale, which is really hard because it's electronically, we won't be able to scale it, so I'm not gonna be able to give you an exact, uh, scalable, uh, front entrance. Um, but I am gonna share with you the survey, and you can have an idea of, of, um, let me share, hold on one second, uh, there it is, so this is.
Yeah.
Yep, this is the line right here where the, uh, the setback is. Um, and this is how much it extends out. Again, uh, if I had an, a copy, um, of the actual, you know, a plan here, I would be able to scale it. Um, or, or Mr. Mullins, if, if you have, uh, the measurements, uh, can you tell us?
They don't have the measurements in front, as I indicated, I left the office and, cause I wasn't sure this was gonna happen, I have all the information there. But it, the width of it, I think it's, it goes, is eight feet right now, the existing width of the, the landing right now is just about eight feet.
Is there a way we can continue this next month and maybe work out the dimensions?
Well, I mean, Madam, Madam Chairman, I think that, well, I think building, the, the building department really has to get involved in this on what's permitted in the doorway. I think the, the cleanest way to do this is to deny it or vote on it, and it gets denied, if it gets denied. And then, if, if the building department comes back and says, yeah, I just cut a doorway in here and you got a big enough stoop, then he's done, he doesn't have to come back to us.
Oh, you mean the existing, the existing landing can fit both doors is what you mean, and it's doable by the building code?
Right.
But if we do it the other way, by continuing it, we might have more answers and that way we're not denying it and he can't come back right away to us.
Okay.
That's the. I mean, that, that's the only thing I can think of.
I'd rather, yeah, I, it's, to continue it would make more, more sense, um, I mean, in my opinion.
And then they can work, he can work with building and maybe you can help, give him some advice as well. I mean, that's, that's what I think we should do, I, I.
We can have a better understanding of the inside too.
Right.
What's, you know, how far from the door are the stairs?
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about, is what is, what does the inside look like if we're putting another door there?
Right.
Well, that, that would, um, I mean, that would definitely give us more answers and, and, and a scaled plan with how big that landing is, where the, where the stairwell, is it right behind there? I, I think we'd have a lot, a lot more answers if we continued it for a month.
Okay, if, Madam Chair, before you continue, I just wanna share, the, the landing itself is eight feet by three feet. And then when you step inside, when you open the door and step inside, it's just about three feet to where the stairs starts, just almost, right? So, give you an idea, so what we're doing, the, the proposed landing or stoop that we're trying to create was only about five feet wide by the same three feet deep, that's what we're proposing.
Correct.
So if we are to use, do a contingency, to consider putting the entrance next to the existing entrance, then, you know, if, uh, if I plead with you to allow us to do that, so give it some study and, sure, I'd appreciate that.
Well, if we continue it, then we haven't denied it, so therefore, y- you can come back, you know, we can, we can just have answers to some of our questions and building might say, no, that, that doesn't really work, or, or they could say, it will work as, as Commissioner, uh, Biotowski said. And so we'd have more answers going forward and we, you wouldn't, you know, it would just be the one month and when we have to, you know, we'd have to, you're gonna need a motion either way because you're still going in, unless Alan thinks perfect, in the perfect world, that you'd be able to fit both doors there, if you're not, and you still have to expand that porch, then you're still gonna have to get a variance from us, and that's why I'd rather continue it than deny it.
Okay.
That, that's my thoughts on it.
All right, do you want me to make a motion?
Sure, Alan, might as well be three for three.
If somebody else wants to do it, I don't, you know. Uh, I move with table application for, uh, Global Tech, is that how you pronounce it? Design LLC for variance on, um, Three Park Avenue until the next meeting.
Which is May second.
May second?
Do we say table or we have to continue?
Continue.
Continue, okay.
Continue, because you've already opened the public hearing.
Yeah, so can you just change, you know?
Continue, yeah.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I second, Shirley Williams.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seth? I didn't hear you. Okay, I read his lips, okay, so, uh, that passes to continue it. All right, then we'll see you next month, Mark, please. You know, don't, you know, get down there and talk with building and talk with Linda and try to see what other things you can come up with.
And we provide photos, thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you, aye. Okay, if I can find my agenda somewhere, um.
Old business.
Old business, do we have to do that tonight, Linda?
No, we do not, as, you know, it really wasn't, um, as I mentioned, I was, um, I completely forgot that I had a, a full week worth of training, which kind of set me back a little bit here, so I do not have.
My email, right?
I did, I did, thank you for your comment, yeah.
So, I mean, I, it's something we're gonna work on, but we're not gonna do it.
There was just a few outdated things, as I mentioned, I believe the fees were outdated, um, that, and then I'd like to also get, um, before you, just an accurate, uh.
Make it, as I said, gender neutral?
Yes, I did get that, yeah, no, I totally got it.
So that the chair could be a woman?
Yeah, absolutely, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely update it, okay?
Okay, so we'll just leave that, and there is.
And I'm not sure, I know you got the minutes today, so I'm not sure whether you've had time to review that, you can definitely table that to the next meeting.
I did not look at them, but if everybody else has looked at them and read them, I, I'm okay with entertaining a motion. Shirley, you're, must be.
I, I'm muted, I'm sorry, um, I haven't gotten a chance to read them.
Okay, so we'll table the minutes as well. Okay.
Again, um, the draft copy is still available for inspection, if people just wanted to see and they would understand it's a draft, it hasn't been approved. But it's Don Mead State Statute that's being, uh, available and accessible to the public.
Okay, okay. So maybe you can put that in our packet next time so that we have it.
Absolutely.
Next month, um, okay, I don't have anything else, um, the agenda says May first, it's May second, though, the meeting, May first is a Sunday.
Oh, yes, you are right, um, the agenda has it there, oh. I'm gonna do it, but we'll make that correction.
Okay, so, does it motion to adjourn?
I move to Jennifer, and I, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, all right, okay, and seconded, and we're all set?
Thirty-four PM, meeting adjourned, thank you so much, everyone, have a restful night.
Can you turn off the recording, Linda?
Yes, I will, one moment, I will, one moment.
I just wanna tell Jackie something.
One moment.
Oh.